Great, we'll move to item number two, roll call. Heather, please.
Harris Armstrong.
Here.
Manny Becerra.
Here.
Arthur Munoz.
Here.
Carrie Romeyer.
Here.
Alex Velto is absent at this time. Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
J.D. Draculich.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. And please, anybody in the room tonight, if you wish to speak at this general public comment moment or on any item, please go to Heather and fill out a request to speak form. Appreciate it very much. Heather, do we have any request to speak forums for general public comment?
Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda, specifically https://links.reno.gov/planing11-1. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you're called on for a public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in a Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. I don't have any voicemail or correspondence for this item at this time, but there may be a request to speak forum.
Okay, for those in the chambers, do any of you wish to speak on general public comment? Well, we'll definitely have our opportunities when the item comes, but anybody in line there wish to speak in general public comment at the moment? Okay, seeing none, we will close item number three, public comment, and move to item number four, approval of minutes, first order 4.1, Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of October 4th.
Commissioner, Chair, Commissioner Villanueva, I have to abstain. I was not present.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if you give me one second, I'm trying to check my calendar.
Okay, no problem. It looks like Commissioner Munoz, Romeyer, and Villanueva were absent on October 4th meeting.
Correct. I'll need to abstain. Commissioner Munoz for the record.
Okay.
Commissioner Romeyer also abstained.
So we have three, can we still, we can still vote? Okay, so for the three of us, we can still vote on approval of the minutes or any changes?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, October 4th.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor for the three of us?
Aye.
All right, minutes approved, thank you. We'll move on to item 4.2, Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of October 18th.
Commissioner Munoz, will you make a move to approve minutes?
Mr. Villanueva, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the October 18th minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes approved, thank you. Closing item four, moving to item five, presentation regarding the Reimagine Reno Master Plan, including, but not limited to, the purpose, contents, and utilization of the plan. Looks like we'll get a presentation. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. For the record, Lauren Knox, Senior Planner. So we have a few new members on the Planning Commission. We thought it'd be a good time to maybe have a training on the Reimagine Reno Master Plan. All right, so let's start with some of the fundamentals. What is the master plan? So the Nevada revised statutes require that we prepare and adopt a comprehensive, long-range general plan for the physical development of the city and specifies certain elements that we need to have within that master plan. Our master plan really serves as a roadmap for the city as it grows and evolves, and is a tool to guide our community towards a desired vision and values. The Reimagine Reno Master Plan has a time horizon through year 2036, and it really serves all of the area within the city's jurisdiction, including the sphere of influence. How was it developed? So the Reimagine Reno process was the largest community engagement effort in the city's history. It began in 2016 and was a multi-year process. This engagement was used to draft the vision and understand the community values that need to be addressed within the plan. I'll get into that more shortly in the next slide. The foundation of the plan was the previous city's master plan, as well as other initiatives that the city had taken on that occurred following the development of the previous master plan. There are some great concepts, but these plans are really meant to evolve and grow along with our communities, so it was really time for that kind of extensive overhaul. So how do we use it? NRS requires that our local ordinances and regulations conform with this master plan. This ensures that everything we do is really rowing in the same direction. The plan contains a vision implemented through guiding principles, policies, and implementation measures that we reference really in our day-to-day business, and it guides our short-term actions, our long-term initiatives, and different strategies that we take on as a city as a whole. We also conduct regular plan monitoring and progress reports to ensure that we are going in the right path and on the right direction. How does it interact with other plans? So a big driver from the planning and development perspective is really that annexation and land development code, which I'm sure you've heard it done about. The development code generally requires that we have a finding of conformance with our master plan, and it's made into any project has to be basically in conformance with this master plan. Additionally, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency is tasked with developing the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The regional plan really functions in a way that all of our local jurisdiction master plans and any affected entity facility plans have to conform with that overarching regional plan. That way, we ensure, again, we're all, the whole community is really rowing in the same boat. The master plan essentially describes where we want to go as a community, and then those other plans really get more specific on how we get there. So again, that Reimagine Reno process was the largest community engagement effort in the city's history, and I want to point out some of the bigger values and vision pieces that the community expressed through that extensive process. The actual process of developing the plan and the basis for policy choices is really rooted in this vision and value. So the vision for Reno now and in the future as a base for outdoor activities, an arts and culture center, a university town, and a technology center. Some of the top community values expressed are really safety for all, a well-maintained and attractive city and infrastructure, affordability, and then a sense of community, and some other key takeaways where people really wanted more walkable neighborhoods and also wanted to improve downtown. That was really an important piece. In terms of layout and content, the master plan has five main chapters you can see listed on the slide overhead. We already touched on a lot of what's in that introduction piece, so I'll touch through and highlight each of the main components of the next chapters. All right, so we'll jump right into citywide policies. So the vision and values that we just discussed are embodied in the master plan through eight guiding principles, which you can see on the slide overhead. For reference, each principle contains goals and policies that really aim to achieve that guiding principle, and the overall vision, again, and values expressed by the community. So I'm going to walk through each of them and just give a little teaser kind of on what's in each section. So we'll start with Guiding Principle 1, Resilient Local and Regional Economy. This really discusses things like economic diversity, business development, and retention. Guiding Principle 2, Responsible and Well-Managed Growth discusses things like growth management, patterns of growth, or an annexation policy. Guiding Principle 3, Thriving Downtown and University District discusses items like economic development, tourism, revitalization, and adaptive reuse, as well as that UNR linkage. Guiding Principle 4, Vibrant Neighborhoods and Centers touches on items like a mix of housing types, infill and redevelopment. Guiding Principle 5, Well-connected Region, items like traffic and congestion, as well as multimodal transportation. Guiding Principle 6 is Safe, Healthy, and Inclusive Community discusses items like public safety, as well as hazard mitigation and emergency mitigation planning. Guiding Principle 7, Quality Places and Outdoor Recreation touches on conservation of natural resources, as well as access to the outdoors. And then Guiding Principle 8 is Effective Government, so discusses items like leadership, transparency, and accountability in government, as well as collaboration. So next, we'll work into the area-specific policies. So this is really laid out by the city's structure plan. So we have regional centers, neighborhood and community centers, corridors, and employment areas, as well as neighborhoods. So our regional centers, we have two regional centers. That's the downtown regional center and the convention regional center. These areas typically serve a broader region, including much of our tourism, and contain a diverse mix of land uses, and this is really where you see the highest, most intense uses. Next, we have our community and neighborhood centers. So you can see they're kind of scattered throughout the residential areas within the city. These centers are intended to provide supportive services to the immediate neighborhoods, things like restaurants, retail offices. Neighborhood centers tend to be more walkable and small-scale in nature, whereas those community centers tend to have some level of an anchor, like a grocery store, something that has a larger, broader community pool. Onto our corridors. As you can see, we have defined urban corridors, suburban corridors, neighborhood corridors, and greenway corridors. These areas are really intended to reflect the key components of the city's multimodal network. So the urban corridors are typically within that McCarran loop. Generally, they're multimodal in nature. They have the high-frequency transit or plan to have high-frequency transit. This is where you're going to see the highest intensity and density in uses. The suburban corridors are more auto-oriented in nature, still want that mix of higher density and intensity, but it's recognized that these areas generally have more limited transit, so the master plan really kind of encourages that gradual transition. Next, we have our neighborhood corridors. These intend to connect those residential areas through that enhanced multimodal network, again, to other neighborhood centers or to these other larger corridors. And then the greenway corridors, typically linear open space along established resources, things like the Truckee River. Again, we want to protect and recognize kind of those important areas. The employment areas intend to encourage and support a wide range of employment opportunities. The design principles included in the master plan tend to promote compatibility between uses and enhance employment-focused characters. The three distinct areas are pretty self-explanatory. We have the industrial and logistics areas, the innovation areas, that's like UNR and TMCC, as well as the airport transportation areas. Then we have our neighborhoods. So the design principles included in the master plan try to promote diverse livable neighborhoods that have a range of options and amenities. So we have the central neighborhoods. These are much more compact, walkable in nature, generally single-family in nature, but do have some multifamily and attached uses. Typically, these areas are smaller in terms of unit size and a little bit more affordable. We then have our outer neighborhoods. So generally, these are outside of the McCarran loop in the older suburban neighborhoods, generally single-family detached in nature. The master plan encourages kind of trying to add a broader mix of housing types in those areas. And then we have the foothill neighborhoods. So these are generally on the fringe of the city, oftentimes have unique considerations, things like slopes or other vegetation considerations. Overall, an emphasis of the master plan is to encourage more of a mix of housing types and products than we've seen in the past. Again, this is to respond to that need and desire for different product diversity, as well as housing affordability considerations.
Hey, Lauren, I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
I just need to make a quick announcement for the people that are in our webinar. We have to restart the webinar so that our seventh commissioner can join, so they will get kicked out, and we just need them to rejoin in a few minutes. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Would you like me to pause?
Good. Okay, go for it. Keep going.
All right, so the next chapter is the Growth and Reinvestment Framework. So the Growth and Reinvestment Framework described in the master plan focuses on two main concepts. That's the land use plan, as well as the concept of concurrency management. So that land use plan really defines the land uses, and the land use map illustrates where and how Reno will grow through the arrangement of those land uses. Concurrent Management attempts to ensure that new growth occurs in a timely manner that's supported by facilities and services that are needed. So touching on those land use categories, as you can see on the slide overhead, there's a variety of land use categories ranging from residential to mixed-use, employment, and more. The master plan defines each of these with the description of the densities, the types of uses, characteristics of development, and the conforming zoning districts. So again, that's that connection with the annexation and land development code. Applying these land uses to the area within the city's jurisdiction is really how we paint that picture of how we achieve that desired future that we want. These land uses work in conjunction with items like the structure plan that I just discussed, and this is what we really use to track our development capacity, guide facilities and infrastructure planning, and also guide future zoning changes. So with concurrency management, the goal is really to promote timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement of services and infrastructure. This attempts to ensure new growth does not create a burden on the existing residents. Concurrent really aims to ensure that infrastructure and facilities support development are provided at the time that those demands are seen. This is done through defining what's needed, who's responsible for the provision and maintenance of those infrastructure and service pieces, and also by defining levels of service for public facilities and services that are desired. Parks and Recreation Facilities are also an important provision of our public facilities and services, and it's really a big part of our landscape fabric as well. They're described within the master plan. There are a variety of different types of facilities, and the master plan really focuses on the fact that each type of facility in each area is going to have different needs and that we should tailor it to those needs. Last but not least, we have implementation. So the master plan lays out seven priority initiatives, as well as about 300 different implementation strategies. So in terms of those priority initiatives, I'll touch on just a few. One of the big ones was aligning the Annexation and Land Development Code with the master plan when it was adopted. This was a task that was undertaken following the initial adoption of the Reimagine Reno Master Plan, and it's an item that we're also currently working on cleaning up. Advancing implementation of the Downtown Action Plan. So we heard from the community how important downtown is to our area and steps are being taken to really move that needle and revitalize the heart of our city. And then in demonstration of the city's commitment to responsible and well-managed growth, that's really a lot of the collaborative work that we do, as well as ensuring that we're as efficient and as proactive as we can be in our planning efforts. In terms of those 300 implementation strategies, each one is related to one or multiple guiding principles, and each strategy really includes information about, okay, who's the responsible party, what potential timing are we looking at, and what resources are really needed. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, please, questions if you have them? Commissioner Munoz, please.
I don't have any questions, just comments. I really appreciate that. I think it's a good thing for the new commissioners to come on, and anytime you want to come on with any updates or anything new, I'd love to have you back. So, thank you.
Any questions? I'm sorry, Commissioner Armstrong, please.
I echo Commissioner Munoz's sentiments, and those are really helpful and instructive for us. My only question is, could you share that presentation with the fellow commissioners? I think it'd be nice to reference it, and, you know, if we have questions, we could always reach out and get, you know, more detail offline, but super helpful. Thanks again.
Absolutely.
Great, okay, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. Folks in the chambers, we're going to take a short, 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 five-minute break to figure out the technical difficulties. Feel free to stay where you are. We'll all be here for a moment, and once Heather tells us that we're kind of good to go and getting our other commissioner on, we'll start right back up. So we'll be on a five-minute break. Item number six, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three public comment is heard at the beginning of this meeting. So we will start with item 6.1, case number LDC23-00066, Liberty Flats Townhomes. And will we be getting a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening, Derek Wilson, on behalf of the developer. And there we go. So this is a request for a tentative map. It's the corner of Liberty and Holcomb, so it's in some of the downtown districts. This is a request for a 21-unit townhouse project. We're here for the tentative map approval. We could build apartments by right, but it's the tentative map that brings us here. It's moderately-sized buildings, three stories. Each unit will be for sale, so we'll have an individual owner. It's surrounded by a mix of primarily office space. So that's our layout. Drive access from Liberty, 21 units, each with their own garage, parking on the first level, so we won't be relying on surrounding streets. Emergency access from the alley and also from Holcomb Avenue. So the existing building is not terrible, but it certainly will be a visual upgrade when we get rid of that. It's an aging office building on site there, so I think bringing some investment and some redevelopment to this area is an overall improvement. That's it. Some views of the architecture, contemporary residential look, mix of materials and surface treatments. The master plan is in place for this. We're in a downtown mixed-use area, no changes to that. Same with the zoning. Zoning's in place. We're in a mixed-use district, so a district that's intended for these sorts of changes. You can see there's no residential zoning anywhere around the project. So as I just mentioned, no residential zoning around the project. There is a single-family house across Liberty Street. In my opinion, we're putting residential next to residential. That's very compatible land use planning. So we're not directly adjacent to any residential. It's all commercial uses. So this site, as you just saw from the master plan presentation, a project like this directly supports some of the master plan goals, including increased housing options, reuse of old sites, and then enhancing the downtown. So, in my opinion, a fairly simple project. I'll be happy to elaborate on any of that if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll get a presentation from staff. Thank you, Brooke.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner. Case before you is a tentative map. That's taking the three existing parcels, and we'll take that into 21 residential parcels and some common area open space. Project site is about 0.7 of an acre. They are looking to establish 21 lots on that. In our downtown core area, in specific to the zoning area, we are looking for a minimum of 21 lots per acre, or 21 units per acre. This comes into about 29, so is very supportive of that housing and density goals. As was mentioned, this is in our mixed-use downtown Riverwalk District, substantially surrounded by that. We have some professional office over with the orange there, and then the dark orange, and then the lighter orange moves into an MF30 zoning. The big things that we looked at on this project is the overall site design, and then that traffic, access, and circulation. So with this, you can see that we have a T-design with the main gated access coming in off of Liberty Street. The Holcomb Ave comes down. Holcomb Ave will not be a through street, but will be emergency access per our discussions with Reno Fire Department. That will be gated. That will also need to be screened in such a way that we can deter headlights. So I'd anticipate a decorative gate or some other screening mechanism on that. And then a few more conditions we're looking at. Along the Liberty side, we do have existing landscape. We would like to maintain that. Normally, we would look for a median and then the landscape, or and then the sidewalk. In this case, we're asking that they maintain the sidewalk where it is, and they will be maintaining the existing mature trees. HOA will be established for that common area, open space, maintenance and maintenance of that internal circulation. Construction hours, because of some of the residential uses, they'll be limited to daytime use and exempt from Sundays. And then, last but not least, is our Regional Transportation Commission. They have a smart chip program, and with this, every owner will be given that programming for that. This is in close proximity to public transportation in our downtown core, and we look to encourage those transportation options. Staff could make all the findings. I'll leave you with a recommended motion and available for questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Brooke. We'll go to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Romeyer, please.
I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Becerra, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Armstrong, familiar with the site, read and received emails?
Commissioner Munoz, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Villanueva visited the site.
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site and read and received an email. All right, with that said, we will open up public comment. Heather, do we have any request to speak forums? Anybody on Zoom on this item?
We did receive correspondence for this item that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and is part of the record. No voicemails or request to speak forums at this time.
All right, anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item specifically? All right, anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item specifically tonight? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go to the Commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff.
Commissioner Rormeyer, I have a quick question for the applicant. Just quickly, on lots 18 through 21, is the front side served off that corridor, or is it designed architecturally? Because the elevation doesn't quite show that frontage. Which side's facing the street?
The...
The front door side?
1821 is the alley side, is that right?
Is that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll enter off the alley for those units.
Okay. So their front door faces the interior courtyard, then?
Yes, there's a front door on the interior side.
Thanks.
No questions, we can move to discussion or entertain a motion. Commissioner Munoz, please.
Commissioner Munoz, I'll start a discussion. We talk a lot about infill in these meetings with the two empty lots there and then removal of this old building. I think this is obviously necessary for the city of Reno for housing, but also a good use of the available space that we have that's limited inside our more densely populated areas, so I don't have any issues with this. I think it's a good project.
Commissioner Munoz, I echo that as well. I think it's a good project for downtown. There's a project pretty similar to it about half a mile towards the river, and I've driven by those and been in those many a times. Great product. You know, it's good for that downtown area to have a little bit more residential, so I'm with you there. Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Same comments. Yep.
Awesome. Commissioner Bussera, please.
Same sentiment. May I ask a quick question?
You may, of course.
For the applicant? There was some feedback received just about an access point for pedestrians. Not sure if you saw that, but was that addressed, or could you speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, one of the features of living downtown is you can walk everywhere. So yeah, we want good pedestrian movement around the site. So yeah, the site will connect to the sidewalks that are on two sides.
Okay. Perfect.
Yep.
Commissioner Villanueva can make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Rormeyer, did you have a question or discussion? But Commissioner Villanueva, you go ahead.
With regard to case number LDC 23-00066, Liberty Falls Town Homes, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
All right, we have a motion.
Commissioner Rormeyer, second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Good luck with your project. Appreciate it. All right, we'll close item 6.1, moving to item 6.2, case number LDC 23-00064, RGM Storage Yard. Any presentation from the applicant? Thank you.
How you guys doing? My name's Rob McCall, I'm the President of Reliance Grounds Management. I have with me Chase Kassani. His vehicles are also parked in the yard, which we will be discussing, which we're seeking a conditional use permit for. So on our agenda, we'd like to do an introduction of who we are, how our companies came about, and tell you a little bit about the background of this site. Like to show you guys some site plans, a few before and after pictures of the condition prior to us taking over the site, and what we've created at this point in time. Then we'd like to communicate with you guys a little bit about some of the things we've done to comply with all the regulations, not only from the city, but from the county as well. So, as an introduction, like I said, I'm the President of the company. We both started the company back in about 2017. He has his own business, I have mine as well. We met early on in the stages. Because of that, we became good friends, and we kind of worked together, and we decided that going in on a yard together would both financially help us, and it would work well for both of our businesses, because I take care of large-scale commercial properties, Chase does a lot of tree work, and the two of us kind of work in parallels. So, we've been working together and sharing yards for multiple years now. Our yard prior to the one that we're currently going to discuss was over off Stoker Avenue. The property and land was sold, pretty much sold out from underneath us with very little warning. We were on a month-to-month basis, they came in and gave us a 15-day notice from their attorney and said, cease and desist, it's time to get out. Fortunately, Chase had a very solid relationship with the owner at 7360 West Fourth Street. He used to be his baseball coach, in fact. Both Chase and I grew up here in Northern Nevada, and the owner of 7360 West Fourth Street had contracted Chase to go in there and do some fire hazard removals. And you'll see in the next slides that the property was a serious fire hazard. So he was in there clearing it at that point. He had discussed with Jerry the possibility of us potentially moving there in the future, and this is prior to us getting the actual eviction notice. We did know the land that we were, at that time, operating our businesses out of, was up for sale. And Jerry had said that it was a possibility, let's work on getting the fire hazards taken care of, we'll go from there. So, the property that we're discussing is located on Fourth Street. Stag Avenue is down, before you get down to Patagonia and all that stuff, it's on the corner of Stag Avenue and Fourth Street. It used to be a trailer park 15, 20 years ago, like a mobile home park. Since then, it had been completely vacated, the Stitzer family owned it for multiple years and basically held onto the property and just let it become native. In the area in which we're discussing, some of our competitors that are in the exact same corridor are Reno Green, Artistic Gardens, just across McCarron is All Seasons, which is a direct competitor of ours as well. And then inside that corridor, obviously, Trekkie River Rock is right down on Fourth Street, just west of McCarron Corridor, and Earthworm Excavation is right across the street from them as well. So, we believe that this is a very reasonable site. A lot of our competitors are right there in that exact same corridor, so it seems like a great place for us to be able to operate our businesses out of as well. This is the site map itself. As you can see, there's three parcels above where we are. The pink site indicates where we have our employees coming in and out in the mornings, they park up there. At peak during the major summer hours, which is when my business itself is at its peak area, obviously that's where we're mowing lawns and where we're trimming bushes and we're running with max capacity. I usually bring in 35 or so employee vehicles, because a lot of the employees ride together. Chase on that, that entity, would you factor in?
Yeah, my business fluctuates, and thank you guys for your time tonight. We do a significant amount of our revenues in California at this point in time from Trekkie over the hill, but max capacity, I probably have 20 employees at that time, which would be maybe 10 to 20 personal vehicles, I suppose.
So, in that pink area, at max, absolute max capacity, and that would be July, August, and September, there's a possibility of maximum 50 vehicles coming in and out of there. The orange area is our fenced-in yard, in which we've established, we did put a privacy fence up around there, it's a six-foot privacy fence. That's where we store the equipment that we use to run our day-to-day operations. The yellow area that's directly closest to the orange area is where we store the green waste that comes off of the properties that we take care of, which would be the stockpile portion of this conditional use permit that we're discussing. That stockpile, we allow to get no larger than maybe 80 to 90 yards of green waste material. At that time, we also have a trailer that's a 40-yard dumpster. We haul the material out and we take it out to Lockwood. They just actually built a green waste facility where they're going to turn it into mulch, and they're going to sell it back to the community as, you know, a nice mulch. So the products we're using are actually being reused and brought back into the community. Then the farther area over is where we're stockpiling wood chips from Chase's business, and at the same time, he takes those out, he hauls them up north to a power plant where they burn them and they create power for different...
Yeah, and then also too, it's a wood chip facility where we donate our chips to the community as well as to a power plant, and then it's a log staging area as well, where people can come sign waivers and get free firewood. We also offer free delivery service, we've been delivering numerous loads out to the native reservation as well, providing free firewood for the community.
This is what the property looked like before. As you can see, the entire field, A, is combustible. There's multiple dead trees in there, which would cause a vertical fire, creating embers that could easily jump over Fourth Street or to neighboring properties. So, that's why we were initially called onto the property. You can tell there's very little sign, if any at all, that it was a trailer park at any point in time. This is what we've turned it into. This is a view from inside of the yard. We brought in road grindings, actually when they did the Fourth Street corridor, down the road where they put the roundabout in. I know some people at SNC, and they were able to bring those in. We brought in rolling compactors, we compacted it. This was an effort, A, to stabilize the soil and to keep dust down as much as possible. So that's what we've done with the property. Obviously, this is prior to us completing and finishing all aspects of the fence and the gates, but this was our initial grading and how it came out. This is what it looks like from the aerial today. All those containers that are multiple colors in front, at the very forefront of this photo, have all now been painted to match the slope. So any of the homes from across the street, or if you're traveling down Mayberry Lane from the opposite side, I actually took a soil sample from the hillside and took it to Home Depot and matched the exact color as close as I could get it, and I painted a painting contractor to paint the whole entire place. All the roofs and all the sides of those containers all matched that hillside down. So it's virtually, I'm not going to say it's impossible to see them, but there's camouflage as I can possibly make them, and that's obviously to try and reduce any unsightly containers or anything that somebody that lives up in those multimillion-dollar homes up on the hillside would have to look down at, or anybody on the traffic of Stag Avenue. We did everything we could to try and disguise it as much as possible. So, we've been communicating and working with the city as much as possible. Initially, we did move into the property, we did not pull all the proper permits, like I said, we were kind of in a time crunch, and as you can see with the size of our companies, we couldn't just shut down. We have contracts with the city, A, we work with Jeff, or I mean, I'm sorry, the guys over at the Parks Department, Matt, and multiple other guys over there. We take care of all the LMAs for the city. We also take care of Somerset, entire Master Association, all of the majority of South Reno, we take care of Double Diamond along with multiple sub-associations down there. And Chase has multiple contracts with government agencies over Northern California, so it wasn't really an option just to shut down the businesses and find a place to go. We've already discussed the size of our equipment and our fleets, and basically, on this site, just for clarification, it is just for parking our vehicles and for putting some of our green waste. We do not have any of our office operations out of there, we do not work on the vehicles on these sites. We both have our own separate facilities where we have our own mechanics. Our offices aren't there, nothing, it's simply a storage facility. That's all there is to this place. Our hours of operations are generally from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., or 9:00 a.m., and that's 9:00 a.m. if we drag out a little bit, because we've got to load some vehicles or load some plants or things like that. And then we're back around 3:30, so from 3:00 till 4:00, and then that's the only time that we're on the property. We'll have a vehicle once or twice pull in and out of the yard, whether it's a manager who has to go pick up another piece of equipment, but the hours and the actual durations that we're on this facility are very, very minimal, and we try to keep it to Monday through Friday. If we do have large projects and we have to work, you know, a crew on Saturday, I think since we've been there, it's been two Saturdays for my business, and I don't know if you've ever operated on Saturday.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So basically, Monday through Friday, very minimal hours, very minimal impact to the community and the neighboring people around us. So, the site was built to the city standards. The NDEP actually went in there and did a full-site survey. They wrote us a concluding letter that said that the grading and all the soil stabilization met all of their requirements, so we had no problems with that. In addition to that, we do have, public services are available to serve the entire project without any issue. The noise that is created from the property currently is generated from our generators that are in the morning. They're just standard generators like you would, you know, power an RV or something with, because we have to power our time clock and some fuel pumps on the property. Those generators are ran for very limited time. The only reason we're currently using those is because we just had MV Energy set the transformer, and we're waiting for our application for our permit to set a new meter on there, and then we'll disperse power right off the power grid through MV Energy. So that's currently in the works. As I said, we are trying to bring power in. The reason we don't have water on site right now is because there's no power, and the property runs on a water well. So, as soon as we get power, we will have water and everything on there. It'll reduce the noise and any kind of dust. Right now, we're trying to minimize the dust, we haven't had any complaints up to this point, but we are aware that it is a dirt property, and we do need to do everything we can to facilitate and minimize any dust, it's just a lack of ability to have water and power there at the time. We do snow removal, and we take care of snow removal. Both of our companies do snow removal. Obviously, we're coming into snow season, and that's why I'm bringing it up. Snow removal is one of those circumstances where we can't control when the storms hit. If those storms do hit on a Saturday or a Sunday like that, unfortunately, we are going to have to operate out of there. And sometimes, we will have to be leaving, you know, at late nights, and we'll do everything we can to try and be as quiet as possible when that happens. There's no illumination on the property, we do not have any power, so we have very, very little ways to illuminate at this point. Any illumination that will come will be from vehicles' headlights, and that will be in the evenings or in the middle of the night when we have snow events where we have to go out and we have to get the guys loaded up, we have to put ice melt and other things in the vehicles that go out and perform our, you know, contractual obligations. We do also, myself, we are a certified licensed chemical applicator. We had the Department of Agriculture come out, they did an inspection. Again, we had no issues there as well. So, they did look at our facility, we have a stored lock container where any chemicals are stored, we didn't have any issues with that, and everything there is up to par, so... That's all I have. Do you have anything else, Chase?
No, I think you touched on most of it. I think a few kind of points you left up on the board there. Stag Avenue, which is a road that's owned by Union Pacific Railroad, was a point that we had to address, and we do have confirmation via email from Union Pacific that they're working on providing us with the contract to utilize that road, so they have granted us the right to use it, we just haven't signed any documents yet, we're waiting for them. It's been a fairly painstaking process working with Union Pacific. Stag Avenue was certainly overgrown. I think we did a favor for ourselves as well as the community around in cleaning up Stag Avenue. Rob had his guys maintain all of the low-grown vegetation while I had my guys maintain all of the trees. Along Stag Avenue, that had overgrown that entire road, we would, all of our trucks would hit those trees every time we drove down that road. I think that's probably, you touched on most of it.
Yeah.
So I guess we can leave it at that.
Yep.
Great, thank you. We'll have a moment to ask you some questions later, so...
Great, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Looks like we'll get a presentation from Jeff from the city.
All right, Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record, bringing you tonight, LDC 2364, which is the storage yard for RGM. The project size is approximately 8.32 acres, and the request before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow for outdoor storage associated with the maintenance repair or renovation business, essentially a contractor's yard. In terms of the geography, we're here on the south side of Fourth Street, above the river, and obviously, south of I-80 there. Zooming in a little further, the uses to the north are undeveloped land. To the west, we have a mobile home park. To the south, we have UPRR land along with the railroad tracks, and then to the east, we have a former motel property potentially being used as a multifamily. The key issues are compatibility with surrounding uses, operational impacts, and traffic and access. The zoning district is mixed-use suburban, and that would allow for a variety of uses, commercial, retail, restaurants, a hotel, light industrial, warehouses, all sorts of things. Outdoor storage requires a conditional use permit. The master plan is suburban mixed-use, and here are a handful of goals and policies that the project lines up with. So history, the applicant presented a summary of the history. I wanted to get a little bit more into some of the nuts and bolts. As was indicated, it was previously used as a mobile home park, and it was vacant until it was leased and the applicants established the landscape maintenance business. As the applicant indicated, they did not obtain the conditional use permit prior to establishing their operations. As a result, code enforcement issued a stop-work order and a notice of violation, and that brought them into the city. The city required the applicant to obtain a stockpiling permit to allow the use on a temporary basis while going through the conditional use permit application process that we're in right now, as well as addressing the conditions of approval moving forward. Specifically, I wanted to point out that condition number five requires the project to comply with the stockpiling requirements in RMC, and this listed are some of the things that they have to comply with for stockpiling. As far as the site design goes, the employee parking area is next to and below West Fourth Street, as indicated in kind of the fuchsia honeycomb area, and it is accessed from a shared driveway serving the site and the parcel to the east, and that parking area is covered with wood chips, and the picture, the inset picture there, you can see showing that parking area covered with wood chips, go figure. The area to the south there is the fenced and gravel, the equipment storage area on the central portion of the site. That is primarily accessed from Stag Lane and is connected to the employee parking area. That is primarily accessed from Stag Lane and is connected to the employee parking area. So you can get between the two. But the trucks and equipment that are in that area primarily access it from Stag Lane. The equipment storage area is buffered by topography as well as its distance from the adjacent land uses. Uh, and then as pointed out earlier, there's a material stockpile area on the western portion. Much of the site remains undeveloped. And I wanted to point out that conditions seven and eight address screening. Um, as the applicant pointed out, the containers have been painted to kind of blend with the surrounding landscape. Um, we also are requiring additional screening, uh, to allow, to, uh, minimize what you can see from the roadway as well as the surrounding land uses. Um, as the applicant did point out, this, the fence yard is screened already. Um, additional landscaping would be required around it as well as up along Fourth Street to screen from, from the roadway there. As far as compatibility goes, um, several other businesses incorporate outdoor storage along West Fourth Street. I was, as was pointed out earlier, I've listed a few of them here. Um, there are also several light industrial uses up and down Fourth Street in the project vicinity such as self-storage, RV and boat storage and other contractor yards. The hours of operation would generally be between seven AM and four PM, Monday through Friday, with occasional operations on Saturday. And as the applicants pointed out, uh, snow removal might require them, will require them, uh, to, uh, work outside of those hours on occasion. Um, all work is done off-site. The onsite activity is generally limited to onsite, uh, or to, sorry, to morning pickup and afternoon drop-off operations. Very little activity happening throughout the rest of the day. As far as operational impacts go, uh, the noise from the project is limited to people entering and exiting the vehicles, voices, uh, delivery and pickup of, delivery and pickup of materials and equipment, vehicle storage, or sorry, vehicle startup and idling and movement. And we did add condition number nine, uh, to, uh, limit idling, not only for noise, but also air quality, potential air quality impacts. Further on operational impacts, uh, the potential air quality issues from vehicle idling, idling and dust generated by the site. Um, so as the applicant pointed out, they did meet N-DUP's stabilization requirements since the outdoor storage area and the access from Stag Lane have been fully gravelled and are not left as bare earth. Condition number ten was added to require ongoing maintenance, uh, of the site to minimize dust generation and other environmental impacts. Regarding traffic and access, the project proposes access onto West Fourth Street, which is actually an NDOT facility, SR six forty-seven. Um, and that would be where the employees, uh, enter the site, and that's in the picture on the top. Uh, from there, they would, uh, park right there in the, in the, uh, employee parking area that I showed you earlier. Stag Lane is a private driveway on federal land and is leased by UPRR. And that is where they would, uh, access, uh, ingress and egress for their heavy equipment primarily. Conditions number thirteen and fourteen require approvals from UPRR and NDOT as applicable in order to use those facilities. And it's my understanding that the applicant is close to having agreement with UPRR for Stag Lane. Here are the recommended findings and, uh, staff can make all the findings. And here is the recommended motion. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site.
Commissioner, I'm familiar with the site and read and received emails.
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site and I read and received emails.
Commissioner Masara, similar disclosures.
Commissioner Ruhmeyer, same disclosures.
Commissioner Dracula, same disclosures. All right. We will now open it up to public comment. I do have some requests to speak forums. We'll start with those. Um, but do we have anybody on Zoom waiting?
Not at this time. I don't see any hands, but that could change.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, first up, we have Lawrence McNutt, speaking in favor. Lawrence, you'll have three minutes and please state your name. And after Lawrence, Michaela Morrison will be up also speaking in favor.
Uh, my name is Lawrence McNutt. I'm the owner. You hear me?
Close to the mic, yeah, if you can. There you go.
Gotcha. There we go. My name is Lawrence McNutt. I'm the owner of the River Inn just up on the other end of Fourth Street. I just thought I'd give you a picture of our place if it's familiar to you. I've managed, me and Dana, my business partner, we manage about forty acres along Fourth Street of Union Pacific land as well as our land. So my, my point here is, I'll tell you a little bit about this project because I've watched it from the moment you guys started putting the wood chips down a little bit before that because it was quite curious what you guys were doing down there. And you also got part of my shaved asphalt, by the way. So, but nonetheless, is, is called the fair application of the rules. That's why I'm actually, that's why we came today. So we've been up here for three years. The first thing we tried to do was pretty much what you guys were doing. And we were completely shut down by the city. And I say that in building that we needed, we were told we had to pave the entire fourteen acres if we wanted to park vehicles out there. Now, I look at Fourth Street as a underserved, under cared for, kind of a mess down on our end. So when I see another business come in to store their, their trucks and they're doing cleaning, they improve the area. So that's why I'm in support of what they're up to. But if I'm gonna see one business get a exception to the rule and I see others that are, that I'm told are grandfathered in, so they, therefore they have gravel parking lots as well, many of the storage areas you're talking about. Those same rules should apply to all of us business owners along the road. I think what these guys are doing, they've dramatically cleaned things up. That's why we're in support of it. But I want to see this type of activity where the, I'll just say the working with the city and the planning here apply to the rest of us. That's what, that's my statement to you guys. Otherwise, God, help us clean up Fourth Street. It's a mess. We got a nice roundabout now. Got a lot of stuff you guys cleaned up, a lot of acreage. Uh, we have a number of other areas that frankly need a lot of cleaning along Fourth Street as well. And I know the other neighbors will like it. Um, I will say a couple of positive things. I'm right on Fourth Street. Your trucks come by my place. I don't see any problem with it. It's not impacting things. Um, my only ingress egress is onto Fourth Street. Um, I drive by your place almost one, almost daily. Um, it looks good. We're always gonna see the tops of your containers though, because we're like, Fourth Street's about twenty feet higher than your container. Yeah. So, uh, so, but, uh, otherwise, you know, we'll be coming to you. We'll be standing right here on some of our projects. I'd just like the same courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you. Michaela Morrison, please come on up, state your name. You'll have three minutes. And after Michaela, we will have Cole Hill, I believe, speaking in favor coming up.
Hi, my name is Michaela Morrison. Um, I am a resident on Stag Lane. I have lived there currently myself for the last three years with my fiancee, Cole Hill. And we have gotten a letter from some of our neighbors at the Siesta Village apartment complex to come to this meeting to voice our, um, opinions on the impact of the business. And when I say we, I mentioned me, my fiancee and his father, that are three of the approximate seven inhabitants that are given access on Stag Lane that live down on the bottom of Stag Lane. We, all three of my family are in favor of Arbor Pros and Reliance. They have done like they stated in the last public comment stated, a huge cleanup of the area. Before it was an eyesore, not just a fire hazard. It was an invitation to homeless and drug users, which have been an annoyance in our area. We, I currently have two encampments on my property that I could show you right now of homeless people. And I believe they have cleaned it up. The presence of a company there pushes those riffraff away that we do not want there. They have, um, the complaints that some of the neighbors have stated is yes, like the noise, the traffic. I myself leave to work. I'm a teacher. I leave between six forty-five and seven fifteen every morning, which is like the time they come in. I have had no issues with traffic. They have been very polite, waiting at their little stop sign for me to pass by. So I just wanted to kind of put in my public comments stating that three of the seven inhabitants that are legally allowed to use the private road of Stag Lane are very happy that they are there and they have cleaned it up. And they have had no problems with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Cole Hill, please come to the podium. You'll have three minutes. And after Mr. Hill will be Jorge Marin.
Hello, my name's Cole Hill. Um, I own sixty-seven eighty Stag Lane. I've lived there my whole life and it has been a dump. These guys came in, they cleaned it up drastically. No more homeless, no issues. I see them run a water truck every day. I see them out my bedroom window. I got no issues with them. I'm happy to call them neighbors.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marin, please come to the podium, state your name. You'll have three minutes. And after Mr. Marin, we will have Jacob Daniel Morris.
Good evening. Um, my name's Jorge Marin. I lived on the property on Stag Lane for eighteen years and it was a dump. Um, some of the neighbors would see me out there cleaning that road from time to time. Or, um, calling in the homeless people that would try to camp out. There was a lot of drug use. Um, it was definitely, um, a fire hazard and these guys did an amazing job cleaning it up. Um, I've, I'm still heavily involved in that property and I'm there early in the morning till late at night, uh, helping the new owners and I've never had any issues with them. So, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Morris, I apologize. It looks like you don't wish to make a statement but are in favor. So no pressure on coming up unless you wish to at this moment. Okay, okay. No worries. Sorry, misread that before. Next up is Suzanne J. Edwards, speaking in favor. And after Ms. Edwards, we will have Crystal Talk.
Good evening. My husband, Hammond Edwards, and I live on Stag Lane and we are definitely in support of the storage yard and the tenants. Since they've become our neighbors, people have stopped parking between the storage property and the railroad tracks where we would frequently see them doing drugs, dealing drugs, leaving drug paraphernalia and other debris, sleeping in their cars and even having sex in their cars. So you can certainly understand that isn't the type of activity we want occurring anywhere near our home. These nefarious activities and the homeless problem have also been greatly reduced as a result of our neighbors. We homeowners on Stag Lane consider this a huge security benefit. Further, Reliance Grounds Management Owner, Mr. Rob Michaela, recently had one of his crews, as he mentioned, trim all of the trees on Stag Lane, which were hanging over the road, which forced us to drive in the middle to avoid scratching our cars. He also had them clean out all of the sagebrush and weeds encroaching the road, picked up all the litter, blew the sand, gravel and debris, collected it all and disposed of it. And prior to their coming along too, I used to tell my friends, when you see the abandoned sofa on West Fourth, take an immediate left. That's Stag Lane. Cause there is no street sign. So we are very grateful for his generosity and Stag Lane looks so beautiful. It rivals the roads in Collin Ranch. Unfortunately, people do like to dump garbage and other items on West Fourth Street right next to Stag and they have been very generous in keeping that area clean. Our home is south of the storage yard, right on the Truckee River, across from Durasker Park. We have to drive by the storage yard every day to access our home. The employees of Reliance, uh, Grounds Management and Arbor Pros, they work a normal five-day work week. I've never seen them there on the weekend. Uh, they leave early in the day and, but I know there are neighbors at Siesta Village Monthly Rental Units who gave us a letter expressing their concern about the alleged quote, noise, dust storms, chemicals and traffic are having on the area, especially given that they are just across from the beautiful Durasker Park, the Truckee River Green Belt and the surrounding wildlife, including songbirds, coyotes, raccoons, mountain lions, squirrels, deer, et cetera, unquote. We have not experienced any of that. The storage yard, as you are aware, is north of the railroad tracks. I can assure you that the presence of our new neighbors is having no negative impact on the local wildlife. Our property is filled with numerous species of birds. We frequently hear coyote very close by. Too close, in fact, for my taste. And in fact, uh, two nights ago, they were in our yard. Uh, we, Sunday, October twenty-ninth, and we could hear them clearly, as did our dogs. We've seen several raccoons in our yard, including one who tried to go inside our home when we left the door open. Uh, at least one skunk, many rabbits, several snakes, an abandoned peacock that we did rehome. And a couple of weeks ago, I arrived home to see five deer in our field completely unperturbed by my presence. Not a day goes by when I drive up and down Stag Lane that the ground squirrels are not playing chicken running back and forth in front of my car between their storage yard and the railroad tracks. So we do not believe any wildlife has been negatively impacted and we hope they stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Crystal, and I apologize. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Feel free to come to the podium. And she wishes to speak in opposition. And next up is Olivier Jounen, I believe.
Hi. I hope you all are well. Uh, I speak to you this evening regarding the issue of Reliance Landscaping, moving on to seventy-three sixty West Fourth Street.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure. It's Crystal Patac.
Thank you.
There were some fallacies in Mr. Michaela's presentation that I unfortunately do not have time to address at this moment. And I'm going to have to speak more quickly, quickly than I would like to communicate, uh, what is needed. Um, while we do agree with a lot of the statements, um, in support of this project, um, we do hope that you have all had a moment to review the emails, videos and pictures that have been sent regarding, uh, this issue, knowing that there are many more that have not been sent. Firstly, this proposal is for a storage yard, but it would more appropriately be termed a base of operations for two very large landscaping businesses who have thirty-plus trucks moving on and off the property twice a day, six days a week, plus their employee vehicles. This traffic is directly in front of our home and has destroyed the quiet and beauty we moved there to enjoy. We have a time lapse video to show you, uh, of the sheer volume of traffic on this road, uh, in just one day, but it was unfortunately erased. Uh, we would like the opportunity to refilm and show that to you. There were months of unpermitted construction right next to our home, heavy machinery every day being driven on an unpaved back road ten feet from our homes. We have videos of backhoes and graders idling ten feet from our home for up to forty-five minutes, filling our house with diesel exhaust and constant loud noise until we were forced to leave our own home because of it. Yes, we are inconvenienced. Yes, we are feeling harassed by the unpermitted construction this summer and constant barrage of trucks in front of our home now. Yes, we are saddened about the loss of use of a small road that many of us enjoyed walking on every day with our dogs, enjoying the beauty of the mountains and proximity to the river. But our biggest concern is the residents who live there being injured by these trucks or their employee vehicles. Residents have voiced concern about themselves or pets being hit with those work trucks while walking on Stag Lane. Many of these trucks are as large as some eyes. Also of great concern is that what they have turned into an employee parking lot is also the entrance to our complex with upwards of forty of their employee vehicles moving on and off the property every day. I personally have had almost two vehicle collisions with their employees while trying to pull into my house. And I recently learned even the owner of our property had a near miss accident as well and was treated poorly by the person to boot. These properties were not made for this volume of traffic on a daily basis. It is not a matter of if an accident will happen, but when. The one potential solution we see that could solve all of the problems, safety, environmental, proper use, is them grading and using the entrance on the far west side of the property. It was once a road and it could be used again if properly graded. I'm gonna have to skip. We find it interesting and rather telling that Mr. Michaela has a good, been a good neighbor to the affluent neighbors across Stag Lane, but not to the twelve apartments who are directly adjacent to the property. Unlike some of our neighbors who are not adjacent to the parcel, we are not so much concerned with an apartment complex moving in if Reliance were to leave as we are of people being hurt in a car accident or hit with one of their trucks. We are not against Mr. Michaela and Reliance being there, but they have been selfish and negligent, not considering the health and safety.
Sorry, your time is up. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Olivier, I'm sorry, probably mispronounced your last name, but please feel free to come up to the podium and, uh, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Olivier Jour. I live at, uh, seven three five zero West Fourth Street, right next to Reliance. I just wanted to voice concerns about the air quality because the air quality has definitely changed since they arrived. There's a lot more dust. Uh, people tend to have a lot more allergic reactions. I do understand that they don't have any power right now, so they don't have any water. So hopefully when they do have water, they can contain the dust. And also the main concern is that both of their entrances are shared with our entrances to Siesta Village. So if there's a possibility to create a new entrance, you know, we have no problem for them to be there. We do appreciate the work that they have done in the area. And we, we understand that they've acted out of survival. They had to do what they had to do. They could have done it better. But now that here, we want to work with them and I'm sure there's a way to make everybody happy. And definitely one way is to have a new entrance for them. And I guess they can have their own business. We won't have to view their traffic. And everybody will be a happy camper. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we will now, oh, I'm sorry. Any, uh, Zoom come in while we're speaking?
We did receive correspondence, uh, and voicemails for this item. They have been forwarded to the Planning Commission at. They have been forwarded to the planning commission and have been entered into the record. And would you like to hear the voicemails right now? We can play them in chambers.
Please, thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is David and I'm, I'm leaving a comment for the project that's uh at seventy-three sixty West Fourth Street, it's uh Reliance Landscaping. Um, and I'm just gonna, I left an email, but I'm just gonna read the email and maybe add another note. My name is David and I have been associated with the property next to seventy-three sixty West Fourth Street for six years. I do have to say the project in question, seventy-three sixty West Fourth Street, has been very impactful to everyone surrounding it in a negative way. I have noticed a massive increase in traffic on the private road, Stag Lane, as well as severe issue with the dust that is being generated now because of the clearing of the natural brush, which naturally mitigated the issue. Now, when I walk down Stag Lane between eleven, eleven-thirty PM and I'm wearing a headlamp, I'm amazed at how much uh dust is in the air and sort of blowing east into my face during the storm of the night. I did include a video from Wednesday, the twenty-fifth during the day showing a dust cloud that just came swooping through there, but um, and there were no vehicles involved at that time, it was just a gust of wind and the video shows like the tail end of the dust storm, but when I first initially saw it, it was almost a whiteout, it was so thick. And I, by the time I got my camera out and was able to video it, it, it disappeared. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, this is definitely a new problem in this area, particularly the dust and the traffic. Um, I've never remember an issue ever before uh this situation uh came to pass in the, on the property next door of so much dust and, and um traffic. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name's Tom Rigdon, I'm one of the owners of seventy-three fifty West Fourth Street in Reno. And I'm calling about seventy-three sixty West Fourth Street. I've uh received some complaints from uh my tenants at seventy-three fifty about the tenants of seventy-three sixty. Um, one of those is the extreme amount of dust and dirt that's being created um because the tenants of seventy-three sixty are parking in a dirt lot. Uh, perhaps they could water that lot down occasionally or something. But I've experienced this myself, just not, not just my tenants, my wife and I are uh having trouble keeping the property clean because of all the dust and dirt. Uh, another issue is that the tenants of seventy-three sixty are using Stag Lane to access seventy-three sixty West Fourth Street. And if that just meant a couple of cars were added each day, that would be one thing, but in this case, that is not the case. There's a tremendous number of cars and trucks and some very big trucks that are used in Stag Lane to access seventy-three sixty West Fourth Street. Um, one tenant reported to me two times that she was almost hit by a truck. Um, there's an entry to seventy-three sixty West, West Fourth Street, which is directly off of Fourth Street, which could be used by the tenants of seventy-three sixty rather than them using Stag Lane. Um, also, at one point at seventy-three fifty West Fourth Street's West driveway, I personally was leaving the property at seventy-three fifty and um a tenant from seventy-three sixty came up their side of that driveway and basically just blared his horn at me as if I was doing something wrong, when in actuality I was in the driveway of seventy-three fifty. Um, and then the last issue is that we also did receive a report that the tenants of seventy-three sixty were leaving garbage behind seventy-three fifty. Anyway, I feel like these are just reasonable and neighborly requests. If something be done, that they uh enter at a different spot other than Stag Lane and that they discontinue dropping off garbage. Thank you. My name's Tom Rigdon, RFR Holdings, my number four oh eight seven one zero four two two.
All right, that's it for the voicemails and there are no hands raised in our um Zoom meeting right now either.
Great, thank you. Anybody else in the chambers wish to speak specifically on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to the commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff. Commissioner Muñoz.
Thank you, Mr. Scher, I'll start. Uh, Jeff's gonna be for you. Uh, I, I understand the explanation of uh this business coming in uh in haste and setting up before everything was properly set up uh through the city as far as pulling their permits, things like that. What is the city stance or even the state stance on um penalties for this happening? And i- is there any whatsoever for that?
So I'm not an expert in code enforcement by any means, but I, as I mentioned, they did issue a stop work order and a notice of violation. Um, my understanding is there are, there's a, a process of fines and whatnot that build up over time if things are not rectified. Um, I'm not one hundred percent sure if some of those things have been put on hold as we've been going through this process, recognizing the natural evolution and timeframe associated with it. Um, but yeah, there is, there is ultimately a, a code enforcement process um that will be ostensibly resolved as a part of, of this, you know, where we're at tonight.
Okay, all right. Um, it seems in the last couple of months, we've had a few applications come before us that have been the same type of thing, where a property has been used uh before they are permitted. Um, and, and the, the word we get, I think we hear a lot, is coming into compliance or bringing it into compliance for what they're already doing. Uh, is there what is the process when they come in to bring their property under compliance um as far as you're concerned? How do, how does that, if you can give me a quick explanation of, of how that process goes?
So um they did come in uh and speak to, actually, I happen to be the planner of the day at the counter uh when they came in. Uh, gosh, back in
Was that May, March? I don't know, sometime.
Sometime before they applied for the conditional use permit. Um, and, and I advised them that they needed the conditional use permit. Uh, they were not able to, to get that, so, but they did get the application for the conditional use permit submitted as soon as they could uh thereafter, which was uh the week of June fifteenth. Um, and so that began the process of bringing them into compliance. Uh, but our immediate request was to get them to get a stockpiling permit because that process could have been done in theory um much faster to at least get them a temporary approval to occupy the site as they are currently for a period of twelve months. So once that stockpiling permit is issued, uh, it's, it's allowed for up to twelve months, okay? So ideally that
Can I interrupt you?
Absolutely.
Is that done?
No, that's what I was gonna get to. So yeah, ideally that would have been completed by now um because of the timeframes associated with various reviews and getting the applicants engineer to provide information and whatnot. Um, it has drug out much longer than it really should have. Uh, so it has not been issued as of today. Um, I know that engineering is the last reviewer to uh have hold comments on that. So hopefully those will be resolved and that permit would be issued within the next few weeks, giving them a twelve-month uh uh timeframe at, at which they would be in compliance.
Okay, so last question, if this is denied today, if this does not go through, is there still a chance for them to get that permit that they have?
Yes, so the stockpiling permit would allow them to operate as they are currently for a period of twelve months, even if the conditional use permit is denied.
Okay, and then i- if, if we are denied here, it goes to city council? Are we just a suggestion to city council? Um, or is this, this is final?
No, if, if you deny it tonight, um, they have the opportunity to appeal it to council, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Muñoz, I just want to clarify, if you do have specific code enforcement questions, code enforcement staff is in the audience tonight and can, can they answer any additional questions?
Oh, Cindy, I'm sorry, you were, did not know.
Commissioner Basara, please.
Yeah, Mr. Foster. Um, question for you, one of, one of the concerns or suggestions I heard this evening was um that folks love this, um, but there are some issues, uh, neighborly issues and valid ones. Uh, one that stood out was uh the, the main entrance for, for the facility and the suggestion by one of the gentlemen was if a western entrance could be used. Is that an option or no?
So currently, the, so the, the entrance that they're talking about as a conflict point is the uh, the entrance that is shared with seventy-three fifty West Fourth and seventy-three sixty, the subject site. So that driveway provides access to the former motel property to the east and then immediately dives down into the RGM storage parking area for the employees on the west, okay? It's a shared driveway. Um, this site has, uh, as my understanding, has all right to use that driveway uh because it is an access to that site. Uh, they of course would not use it for the large vehicles because simply really impossible. So the, only the employee vehicles would be the ones that would use that area. The theoretical driveway further to the west, we were looking into this today. Um, if I can get my presentation up, I'll show you where I believe, though I have not been shown a diagram, but where I believe they're talking about. So let's go, let's go to this one. At the very left of the screen, you see a sliver uh diving down into the parcel. Um, there appears to be a former road right there. Let me see if I can grab a different. Well, okay, on this one, you see the, the spike that, that goes up from the subject properties to Fourth Street. That appears to have been used as a, some kind of a informal road, never a formal road, I don't think, by the looks of it, um, that accessed that parcel, which is one of the two subject parcels. Um, potentially in theory, that could be used as a driveway uh for the employees. Um, it would be a little unusual because um the, the employees would then have to kind of circumvent around to another parking area, to the parking area up above, or use a different area of the site for parking. Um, the other thing would be just grade-wise and whatnot, and I'm not an engineer, but just kind of looking at it, it looks to be a pretty tough uh ask as far as getting uh, you know, a, a, a real driveway in there. Um, I would also point out that any uh development of that as a driveway, as a formal driveway, would require approval from NDOT, um, which is an impediment.
Yeah, great, thanks, Mr. Foster. May I do a follow-up?
You may, please.
Uh, of the applicants, if I may. Uh, gentlemen, why don't you step on up? First off, kudos, um, you know, small business is the backbone of our community and y'all are making the loneliest highway, or the loneliest road of the, our highway, how does it go? Y'all, okay, so that neck in the woods is not so lonely these days and it seems like y'all have a lot of great support, which is fantastic. Um, are there any neighborly issues that have been reported that y'all can't work through?
It's definitely nothing we can't work through. Um, we've attempted very much so to comply with requests from um any individual that has complained, especially the individuals from the, the now, I'm sorry, um, the people that now occupy the multifamily place that at one point was a motel or whatever it was. Um, we've actually chained off all portions within three hundred and fifty feet of that property. There's two access roads and one that comes off Fourth, where the employee parking is, that splits, that comes right behind those. That's chained off right off Fourth Street next to theirs. And then within three hundred and fifty feet of our portion of our yard, where at any point in time, one of our employees could drive behind there, all of those access roads are chained off and there's boulders across where the chains are. We brought boulders in. You cannot access it. I drove up it today simply to put a sticker on our sign. I had to drop the chain just because I have the key to the lock for the chain. And I drive a large four-wheel drive Duramax diesel and I could not go around this. It was, it's impossible. I mean, I, I actually looked, I was like, man, do I have to take, get out and unlock this? I, I had to. So we've done every effort we can to avoid them. Furthermore, that area, because we did have some complaints, we went to the um, the neighborhood advisory board meeting. We understood her complaints regarding equipment next to their property, diesel fumes, dust or anything like that noise. What we would like to do and what I'd like to propose to her, if we can get her to approve this and the landowner, is we would like to come in there and we have a copious amount of wood chips, as you can imagine, that's what he does all day, is chip wood. We can bring that wood in there and I'd like to spread it over that small area that is directly adjacent to their property, where any dust could arise during a dust storm or an, an event of wind. Put wood chips on that, that will reduce and pretty much solve any problem for any of that wood. Furthermore, the area that comes off, which we've already gotten signed off, is okay, but it, it does have um road base on it. And as we all know, when the wind blows, road base, when it's dry, will create some dust. We would like to bring in some additional asphalt grappings and put it down, steamroll it and make it a nice solid, as close as we can, asphalt access point. But again, we don't want to disrupt the neighbors and cause any more future conflicts or issues of any kind until we get approval to do so. And simply, I can get road grappings tomorrow, I can call the guys at SNC that brought us the initial road grappings, I'm good friends with them. They can come in, they can bring us road grappings, we can spread them out. It will cause some noise for the neighbors for a very short period of time. We'll grind them out or we'll lay them out with a road grader, we'll compact them and we'll make sure that we do everything we can to reduce any dust that can possibly come off the property.
Thank you, and, and your, your scrappiness and resilience is applauded. A question on safety, with the snow season coming too soon, um, I think there was a note about potential weekend work and so forth, because y'all do uh snow removal. What does that potentially look like? Uh, I know, I know it's hard to predict, you know, when the snow comes, but it seems like it's coming sooner than later.
Yeah, yeah, um, you know, historically, the snow usually comes, you know, last year, we had a, just shot, you know, I think November first was our, our first storm, where we actually had an event where we had to go out and plow, yeah. Well, actually, we like it. Um, but I, I usually, what we've seen is it usually comes right around that Thanksgiving time. So we will be getting into snow season. Snow season for us basically is dispersing trucks with snow plows on them. We do have one large um dump truck that we purchased, it was retired NDOT truck. We use that for plowing all of the gated community in Somerset. I actually stage it at, at Somerset at the clubhouse. My CDL driver reports directly to the facility at the clubhouse, that truck will not even become a factor. The other pickup trucks that do go out with snow plows that we use for parking lots, apartment complexes and smaller HOAs, will disperse from Stag Avenue. A part of the agreement that we have that um with the um UPRR, the railroad and Stag Avenue for our access point, is that we will maintain that. So the noise that will be caused along Stag Avenue will be us plowing Stag Avenue so the residents can get out safely and get, you know, a nice speed, or get some speed and encroach on the Fourth Street in a safe manner. So we will be plowing and taking care of Stag Avenue. And on top of that, the most, you know, the uh, the multi-use or multifamily place, right now, in this public area, and I will tell you right now, I will plow that entire place for free. If, if they want us to, we will come in there and we'll plow their whole entire property for free for them. I don't have any problem with that. Again, trying to comply and be a good neighbor. We'll do anything we can to try and move forward and rectify this situation. Um, if they want us to come in after we get through with a couple of areas, so we don't wake up all the residents in there, I, again, we will comply with that. Now, when we do come out of our property, what I would like to do is I would like to put the plow down and push the snow off the side of the road. So all the rest of the vehicles that come out from our property have a nice, safe way to get up on the Fourth Street and then get, moving forward and not have to go down through the snow and pack it down and turn it into a sheet of ice essentially. So a little bit of noise may happen when it is snowing in the evenings or in the middle of the night, when we have to come out. But for safety reasons, we would like to plow Stag Avenue initially, just for egress purposes, for us to get in and out of Stag Avenue. That would be the only noise that they would ever really hear at all. Because we don't have to run generators, we don't have to do anything. We fire up vehicles and most of our, I mean, my oldest vehicles are two thousand and fourteen and they're all new, they, they don't have exhausts on them, they're, it's all stocky mission stuff. We can turn on the headlights and that's what we'll use for illuminating the yards.
Great, thanks, gentlemen. Y'all heard it, free plow for life on Stag.
Commissioner Villanueva, oh, everybody wants to speak. Uh, Commissioner Villanueva, please go first, Commissioner Warmer.
I'll try to be quick, I think I missed some of, I was looking at Google Maps and looking at the area, so I apologize if I'm asking questions that were already answered for Mr. Foster. Um, the Stag Road versus the other entryway, I believe. Um, the, actually, can you pull up your map that you had up earlier?
I have a really clear map.
Okay, if you want to put that up.
This is at
Yeah.
There's actually a telephone for it.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay. I did draw, I did visit the site, but obviously I had some issues because there's no, is this right, that there's no paved road currently?
So the, excuse me, the driveway that accesses the site currently that the employees use to get into the employee parking area is paved?
It is paved, okay.
Yes, this road that would be in the blue area here, I believe that's what the property owner, Mr. Rigdon, was suggesting, was another road further to the west, another, sorry, another road, another driveway further to the west. I believe he is talking about a driveway that could come in in this area here into the site.
Okay, as, so that's what he was requesting, is that?
That's what he was requesting, I believe, yes.
And then what was the issue with that? And like I said, I apologize if you went over this. I was.
No problem at all, no problem at all. So a couple of things. One is it would be a rather circuitous entrance to get to the employee parking area because ostensibly, they would still need to go around and park in the employee parking area further up along West Fourth Street unless they turned another part of the site into an employee parking area. But right now, they would have to go in here, down, around the fenced area, back up into the employee parking area. So it's circuitous. But number two, and we haven't had a chance to look at this formally. This was just kind of a back-of-the-napkin analysis of it this afternoon, after we got those voicemails and emails. But the grading and engineering associated with developing a roadway, or a driveway, I should say again, would be potentially quite challenging. Not, maybe not impossible, but certainly challenging due to the slopes.
Okay.
And then lastly, as I did mention earlier, also, that would also require an NDOT encroachment permit because there would be a new formal driveway accessing Fourth Street.
Okay.
So again, another impediment.
Okay, and then Stag Avenue, I know we had some folks have issues with the trucks going on and off, you know, traveling on Stag. There's no other entrance way for those trucks, right?
No, that's the only place that they could enter, yes.
Okay, and the issue, if, was it NDOT, right? NDOT that had that, they need, they're working with NDOT, is that correct? If that, if they don't get the approval, what happens at that point if NDOT does not give them the approval that they need?
So UPRR, I think, is actually what you're asking. Yeah, yeah, the railroad, Union Pacific?
Yes, that's right, yep.
So if they do not get the approval from UPRR, or if they do not get the approval tonight?
Yes, if they don't get the authority to be able to use that road.
So, and that would tie back into the long-term use of the site as Commissioner Munoz was asking about. So if they, if they are denied tonight, and ultimately, again, they could appeal to council and have a.
No, I mean, if UPRR denies them that access, not us.
Okay, okay, I apologize. Okay, so if UPRR does not allow it, then they would, that would effectively be a showstopper. But I have seen communications that the applicant is having with UPRR, written communications that suggest a very positive outcome with respect to that.
All right, thank you for kind of reiterating some of that.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Romeyer, please.
Yes, Jeff, I have questions about the application itself. Understanding that this came in sort of as a response to code enforcement. What is the paving plan here and the parking plan? It's unusual to not see that in a CUP?
The paving plan.
To have parked, a paved code, to have paved parking area. There's a lot of parking on this site, and there seems to be no indication of striping, number of spaces, the sort of typical things you see in a CUP application. Can you walk me through what the plan is?
So the plan is not to do anything other than what they're already doing. Engineering has looked at this, and they've approved it with just the parking area in the format that it's currently in with the wood chips. There's not a formal parking plan per se.
And as I read the conditions of approval, so they have to comply with code requirements but to get a business license, correct?
I believe that's what it's tied to, yes, yeah. Because that, yes, it is, because that's the last thing that we can hold them on.
And do they have a business license today?
No, they do not. They're operating without a business license. So you have your, you may have your business licenses for other locations, but for this location, that business license is pending.
I, I'm just, I'm surprised to see an application that doesn't have this level of detail. And it would be very beneficial to understand, you know, what you traditionally see on a plan. So I just need a little more information because they were talking about, I've heard 40 parking spaces. I'm just not seeing it on the site. Can you help me understand what's next?
So this being an outdoor storage use, it would be hard to define a parking ratio associated with outdoor storage because essentially, it's not a, there is no building, there are no people, right, other than people coming to the site and parking their vehicles. So there's not a traditional parking ratio or calculation associated with this. And as I mentioned a minute ago, engineering has looked at it and is not requiring a formal parking area in terms of pavement and striping and things like that. So that area is plenty big enough to park that many vehicles. I've been there multiple times. It's certainly big enough. But it wasn't something that we looked at in terms of a traditional parking calculation and a formal parking lot and things like that.
I think, then, the question is, why is there not a consideration of this as a parking use in addition to an outdoor storage?
Go ahead, Ms. Rayly.
Commissioner Romeyer, just to clarify, I think Jeff is correct. If you look at how code would define this, it's a storage yard. It's the fact that the employees come and park their cars there, it's because they're accessing equipment that's stored in that yard. So we would not require a formal parking or paving plan because it's not something that's open to the general public. It's just the employees. So in that case, those provisions, the code for parking, would not apply to such a use. So it's essentially an outdoor storage use rather than a use that would generate a form, a need for a formal parking lot. Does that, does that make sense?
Commissioner Armstrong, please.
Jeff, this one's also for you. So related to the conditions you have for idling and some of the, like, maybe dust control parameters, I think we've heard some valid concerns around that. How does your proposed conditions actually, like, enforce that? So there's not idling going on for, you know, long periods of time, as we heard tonight? Or some of the dust controls, there are like requirements that they use water to deal with the dust control? Or do they just have to use whatever resources are available? But like, do they, like, is there a formal compliance with idling and dust control that will make this more copacetic in the neighborhood?
Okay, so for idling, traditional idling conditions require signage that to be posted that says vehicle idling is not allowed, that kind of a thing. If I recall correctly, and I apologize, I don't have the conditions up here in front of me, but that would be, that should have been in the condition language. If not, it's certainly something that that's, again, kind of the expectation with that signage would be posted on the fences, reminding operators to not idle. The, I mean, there's a certain amount of idling that just happens when you start up a vehicle, right, and let it warm up for a minute, but, you know, kind of ongoing idling is what we're talking about. And other than signage, that's, I mean, that's our available mechanism to require it, to minimize the amount of idling. Certainly, if it became an ongoing issue, that could be another code enforcement.
Okay, yeah, that was my next question. Is there, like, a code enforcement mechanism that if it occurs for, you know, like, 45 minutes or inordinate amount of time? Like, is there a way for it to actually be addressed and dealt with so that compliance is?
Would you like to speak on this? Is it, do you have a?
Yeah, I kind of just want to know how it works, right?
Good evening, Commissioners. Cindy Gil Blanco for the record, City of Reno Code Enforcement Supervisor. So essentially, what happens is we get a complaint. So you pass this, and suddenly, we get phone calls that the trucks are idling for a long time. We send a code enforcement officer out there to basically videotape that whole time and surveil and see what's going on.
And then if, if it is an ongoing issue, like, is it a fine? Is it a cease and desist? Like, what's the action that gets taken if it's an ongoing issue?
The first one would be, the notice that we would issue would be a warning.
Right.
And then after that, it's $100, $250, $500, and then a $1,000 fine.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to know what kind of enforcement mechanisms are in place to prevent it from being an ongoing issue.
Right, and then, you know, if it kept going, then we would have a revocation hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drack, Jeff, I got a question for you. Regarding the business license, do we believe they're going to be granted the license, and what's the timeline on that?
So the holdup on the business license is precisely the CUP tonight. So when they, when this, if and when the CUP were to be approved, that would allow the business license to be approved.
Weeks, months till it's delivered?
Days and, days to weeks, yeah.
Days to weeks, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for clearing that up.
And Commissioner Armstrong, I don't think I had a chance to answer the question about the dust control.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, so the, one of the conditions does require watering. They can, certainly, as you heard the applicant mention, they can, you know, or intend to water the site. I believe have been watering the site, but intend to continue to water the site. If and when they bring electricity, that would allow the well to be pumped to fill their water buffalo. That would allow a more easily and readily available means of watering the site to control dust at the appropriate times. The other thing is, as the applicant talked about, they have all sorts of ways to control dust with wood chips and, you know, grindings and things like that. So we really were just made aware of the dust issue during the comments that flooded in, so to speak, over the last few days. But that was not something that had been brought to our attention before. My staff report did talk about a dust control at a more general level, but I think it still covers the issue in terms of how it would be addressed.
Great, that's exactly what I wanted to know. I really just want to know that there are parameters in place so that there are mitigants to excessive dust control, et cetera. So it sounds like it's being conditioned perfectly. I just wanted, sorry. I'm not loud enough, as it is. But yeah, just wanted clarification that there were proper, like, protocols in place to manage some of the issues that we've seen via email or that were brought up tonight, so.
Yeah, and in fact, I would also point out that an agency was contacted today, is my understanding, and they are in the process of obtaining a dust control permit. So there, I would imagine that as a part of that dust control permit, that they would have to provide standard best management practices that they would, you know, incorporate into their operating protocols to keep dust down.
Awesome. Thank you again for that color, Jeff. I really appreciate it.
Seeing no questions, we can shift into discussion if we'd like. Commissioner Basara, please.
Oh, sure, thank you. Great discussion. You know, I attended the workshop earlier this morning with the city on housing, highlighting not just housing, but just process, and how we just need to get out of our own way at times. And I'm a staunch believer of empowering folks. Definitely took to heart your note, gentlemen, on the front about the application fairness. So we'll be keeping that top of mind. And so I think this is a great opportunity for us to showcase how sometimes life happens. It's messy. You know, people didn't go through the process. You had to be scrappy. You had to figure out, what are you going to do with your passion or dream overnight? And we need to gauge these situations accordingly. Sometimes there's a small business like y'all. Sometimes it's a bigger project that's going to impact wildlife, communities, and so forth in different ways. This is one of those that I think just makes sense, you know? So I'm all for it. I think it's a great way, or an example, to showcase how we can help folks navigate this sometimes arduous process.
Commissioner Basara, kind of going back to what you said earlier, small businesses are a backbone of our community. I really support them. I've never met the applicant, Mr. McCall, before, but I have heard his name through people I trust and respect, and heard nothing but positive things about his integrity. And I'm seeing here tonight, you know, in public, he's stating on the record that he's here to be a good neighbor. Looks like they have more to get to, and obviously, probably didn't go down the way they wanted it to. And I'm with you there that they're ready to make it right. I see a good business, and I see a lot of support for what he's doing, and also, once again, room for improvement over time. And I don't have any reason to believe he won't try to deliver on that. So just my thoughts on that. Commissioner Romeyer.
Sure, I have, I appreciate the effort that went into coming tonight and hearing from the neighborhood. I strongly feel that there's a lot still to be figured out on this site. Dust permits and things are still being understood and in the process. It's not far enough along, in my opinion, demonstrating that the CUP is is clearly defined in all of the things that need to be done. So I will not be supporting the application.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we will entertain a motion. Commissioner Munoz.
Hey, Commissioner, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Case number LDC 23-00064, RGM Storage Yard. Based on compliance with the pickable findings, I recommend that the planning commission approve the condition use permit, subject conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make the findings.
All right, we have a motion.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
Okay, motion passes five to one. Good luck with your, with your project, and we appreciate your support moving forward. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute bathroom break. We have a healthy item coming up in front of us, so let's take a quick breather. All right, everybody, we will pick up from our break. Thank you all for giving us that time. We're going to move on to item 6.3, case number LDC 2400011, Santeraculisse Secondary Access. Looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant. Please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Baker, Manhart Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. Thanks for having us this evening. Project location, I'm going to try to use the pointer here. So project's located south of Interstate 80. To give you a point of reference there, Interstate 80 is that gold center line. East of Gavica Lane.
The pointer doesn't work. You can use the mouse. There should be a mouse up there.
It's working.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's working. Thank you, though.
But the Commissioners can't see it, so.
Can't see that screen.
All right, fine.
There you go.
Hey, guys, the pointer doesn't work. Okay, let's do this again. Okay, project location, south of Interstate 80. As you can see here, where the pointer is, east of Gavica Lane, which is a little bit difficult to see. It's actually kind of right here, running north and south. And again, it is four APNs. And the, kind of the route is that, is that green area. The existing land use designations, there's multiple here. The existing master plan, public quasi-public, large lot, and then open space. As you can see, the existing zoning designations, the majority of the site actually isn't zoned. It's made up of railroad right-of-way and Washoe County right-of-way. So that's the area that's not colored there, that you can see the green kind of bisecting. There is a little bit of R or LLR.5 and a little bit of open space. The request tonight is for a major site plan review for cuts greater than 20 feet and fills greater than 10 feet, and then grading in that open space zoning district that I referenced. A little bit of project background. It's taken a lot to get where we are. I know some of you are familiar with kind of the history of this. The associated tentative map with the secondary access was approved March 24, 2021. And it did have one route, and I'll give you a little bit more detail on the next slide. Later that year, after kind of working with an adjacent property owner that was affected by the secondary access route, a new or alternate alignment was was proposed. It approved via special use permit. The big thing here is it really reduced the overall length of the secondary access. It cut it essentially in half. And obviously, when the roadway is less, the grading and associated impacts are less. So all of that was reduced with this special use, special use bit approval. There was a condition included to coordinate with the Steamboat Ditch Company because all of the proposed and approved accesses do cross the ditch. So we have been working with them at length. In front of you tonight is the third iteration, I guess, for the major site plan review. What happens here is, over the last two years, the applicant has acquired some additional property out there. And as a result, some design modifications have occurred. So the major site plan review really just incorporates those new design modifications. Most of those are relating to grading, hence the cut and fill requirement. And it does, the alignment of the ditch crossing is a is a preferred route by by the Steamboat Ditch Company. So here's the slide I was referencing. I'm going to use the pointer. The approved versus proposed design. First and foremost, the design's consistent with the approved roadway alignment. What you're looking at here in green is the roadway alignment that was approved via the special or via the tentative map. In red, it is a little tough to see because the red alignment and the gold alignment are nearly identical. That is the current approved special use permit alternate alignment, right? So as you can see, significant reduction in overall length and impacts associated, not only to property owners but with grading. What's in front of you now, again, is there was the addition of this little triangle piece here. During the approval process at the tentative map and the approval process of the special use permit, that was not controlled by the applicant. They have since acquired that and grading modifications have resulted. The big, really what's happening here is significant reduction to walls. With the addition of this property, reduction wall heights from 23 and a half feet to a little over 13 feet. Not only that, we had double-tiered walls before, and now we were proposing only single-tiered walls. So what that does is significantly cut down the length, so the linear foot of wall, from over 2,600 feet to just over 1,300 feet. And again, as a result of this, the maximum road grade actually decreases a little bit also. So the request is for cuts and fills. Again, the roadway alignment, which you're seeing here, is nearly identical to what's currently approved via the special use permit. That was for cuts and fills also and for grading in the open space. There was a code update, special use permit in 21. Now it's actually a major site plan review, so that's a difference in terminology. What you see here, the cuts over 20 feet are in red and the fills over 10 feet are in blue. That newly acquired property that we're talking about is this little triangle piece right here. And there is an associated cut there. So again, a lot of the discussions regarding walls before, because of the wall heights, there was a soil nail, which is a little bit more impactful wall that was required because of the height. Now that we're reducing the wall heights, we can use precast decorative retaining walls, which in my opinion do look a little bit better. So these are a couple of examples of what those walls could look like. We did provide photo simulations as part of the application request. So this is looking south from Crystal Park Road and Gavica Lane. So essentially, the proposed roadway would go right through here. And with the current approval of the special use permit, these were actually double-stacked walls. So the impact went way down into here. And then this is the wall we were talking about that is proposed now to be just over 13 feet. That was the 23 and a half-foot wall that went all the way parallel to the road. Here's another angle. This is looking east from Interstate 80 towards Quilice Road. As you can see here, before, this wall now is 13 feet, before it was 23 feet. And then it's a little tough to see, but there were double-stacked walls required on the downhill slope side. We did attend the NAB, and there was some public comment at the NAB. The bulk of the public comment was actually relating to the approved tentative map and its impacts, not really specifically relating to grading associated with a redesign of a secondary access that's currently approved. There was some line of sight concerns with the neighbor. We actually went, I actually went and met with Chance. He's here in attendance tonight, and I'm sure he'll be speaking, out at his property. Identified that 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 he had a concern. And we kind of came up with a solution. We worked with the applicant to provide a solution. And then we talked to staff, and I know staff's going to provide some language for an additional condition that the applicant would enter into voluntarily. So with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now take a presentation from Jeff from the city.
All right, Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record, tonight, LDC 2400011, and that's the secondary access for Santeraculacy. The project information, the disturbance area effectively where the where the secondary access road would go is approximately 5.4 acres. And as has, as has already been detailed, we have a major site plan review for grading resulting in cuts greater than 20 feet and fills greater than 10 feet, as well as grading within the PGOS zoning district. So location-wise, I think the applicant did a, you know, a fine job indicating where this is at. But to belabor the point just a bit, because I was told that during the Santeraculacy project approvals, people didn't necessarily know where we were talking about. So you can see there the circle around the area where we are at, south and east of I-80. East of the, yeah, east of the railroad tracks there. The key issues are site design and grading, compatibility, as well as traffic and access. Zooming in here, we can see a little bit better where things are at. And you can see Boomtown there and the Boomtown-Garson Road interchange. That was actually an abandonment for a portion of Old Town Road was approved at council last week. And that's actually related to this project in an overall sense because the new access that provides the primary access to the overall development in this area is there at Boomtown-Garson Road. And so that abandonment was approved at council last week. This is the secondary access that will provide secondary access to that development area. And we'll get a little bit into the, a little bit further into that later on. So the zoning districts, as the applicant indicated, there's a mixture of L L R.0.5 and PGOS, as well as no zoning in that right-of-way area. And here's the master plan land use, again, a mixture of public quasi-public, large lot, neighborhood, and PGOS. And then a bunch of different policies that the the project lines up with. So history-wise, again, the applicant went through this, but since I've got the slide. So the city council approved the Santeraculacy Properties tentative map and the corresponding master plan and zoning map amendments in March of 21. That text is in green to correlate with the green secondary access road that was approved as a part of the tentative map. The SUP for the preferred alternative alignment was approved in October of 2021, and that's the red. The SUP included a condition to coordinate with the Steamboat Ditch Company and a revised alternative alignment was preferred. That's the one in yellow. So we can keep on going from there. It's, it is important, though, the last bullet, I did want to stay on that for just a second. The application seeks grading entitlements required for the currently proposed alignment. That is the only thing that we are here for. We're not here to reexamine the tentative map, the approvals associated with that, or any other action. We are literally here just for a secondary access road that was actually approved two years ago and could have been built at that point in time with the previous alignment. The revised alignment, they only have to come to us again because of the new parcel with the additional grading with the cuts exceeding 20 feet. And so again, the scope of what we're looking at tonight is just the approval of this secondary access road. Nothing else off-site, nothing else associated with the tentative map. As far as the site design, the secondary access road is designed to minimize grading and overall visual impacts. The applicant went through a comparison of some of the things that have changed. The original one, sorry, the secondary access approved with the tentative map, again, the original alignment was about 2,600 feet. The previous SUP approval was about 1,300 feet. And this proposed secondary access road, where we're at now, is even shorter at 1,260 approximately. And again, compared to the approved secondary access, the proposed secondary access alignment will reduce the amount of retaining walls, reduce the overall height of the walls, and reduce the maximum grade of the road. Site design again, the the wall heights are indicated in the first bullet. The applicant already went over those. It is anticipated that a precast decorative block retaining wall with a rockwork look will be used, and that will be vetted during final design. And conditions five and six are included to require matching earth tone colors and additional geotechnical analysis. And these conditions are actually very, very similar to the conditions that were on the previous SUP approval. For site grading, here are the maximum fills and cuts in the first bullet. The applicant already went over these. We did also include conditions seven to a nine to address enhanced grading techniques that are above and beyond the the requirements that code has to that, to deal with grading and cuts and fills. So the applicant will be required to address standard code conditions regarding grading and cuts and fills. Seven to nine conditions add some additional layers to that to make sure that things are done in the best possible way. As far as compatibility goes, the site design generally minimizes visual impacts and blends with topography. The grading would impact approximately 105 mature trees. That number was 30 previously. Condition number 10 requires a one-to-one native tree replacement. Previously, they were not talking about irrigation of the trees. They now have the ability to irrigate the trees, which will help ensure their survival. And so they, there will be at least 105 trees. And I also amended the condition that was on the previous SUP approval to require a mixture of seedlings and saplings versus just seedlings so that we would have a more immediate effect in terms of the maturity of those trees and not just a bunch of tiny little trees. Condition number 13 requires improvement and maintenance agreement with the Steamboat Canal and irrigation companies similar to the previous approval. The applicant did show these visual elements here. That's Perspective A and Perspective B from I-80. As far as traffic goes, and this is something that has come up ad nauseam in the comments that have been submitted to the Planning Commission over the last several days regarding the, a new traffic report. So the master traffic study for the Mortons and Garsons Overlay District Planning Areas 2 and 3 was prepared in December of 2019, and that was part of the previous tentative map approval. The study evaluated development build-out within the MGod area and analyzed a proposed secondary access road to serve the greater MGod Planning Area 3. The traffic study identifies this as a secondary access with approximately 23% of residential trips. The primary access, as I mentioned earlier, is provided with connection to I-80 to the north through the Meridian subdivision, which will accommodate the remainder of the trips. And again, that's at the Boomtown-Garson interchange. And if you drive by, you can see all the work that's being done on a new end dot roundabout, as well as a new roundabout associated with the subdivision right there off of Boomtown-Garson Road. The proposed revised alignment is consistent with the study. There are no additional traffic impacts that were not analyzed in that study four years ago. And the traffic-related conditions of the previous tentative map approval will ensure that the required level of service standards for all projects in the MGod are maintained. So what this all boils down to is many of the comments have requested an update to the traffic study, which is simply not warranted. We're not talking about new development. We're talking about a previously approved tentative map based on a traffic study. The secondary access road has nothing to do with adding traffic or anything else. It is simply a condition of approval from the previous tentative map. And therefore, a new traffic study is not warranted as a part of the action that we have tonight. Here are the major site plan review recommended findings, and staff can make all findings. And here is the recommended motion, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. We'll go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Romeyer, please start.
I'm familiar with the site and received voicemails and emails.
Commissioner Visser, same disclosure, and I also spoke with Mr. Baker.
Commissioner Armstrong, I read and received emails, listened to voicemails, and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Munoz, familiar with the site, read, received emails, listened to voicemails. And I was present for the last two times this has brought before us.
Commissioner Villanueva, I visited the site. I received and read emails. I was also at the October 20, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Dracula, read and received emails, familiar with the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, also present for the 21 meeting. All right, we'll now move into public comment. I do have one request to speak form. Have there any more forms come through?
No other requests to speak forms at this time.
Okay. Oh, give me one more. Right on. Any, before I get on to the people present here, any Zoom or voicemails to expect?
There is nobody in Zoom with their hand up. We did receive correspondence that was distributed to the Planning Commission and is part of the record. I do not have any voicemails for this item.
Great, okay. We'll start with the people present tonight. First up is Chance Reading. Wanted to make a statement in opposition. Chance, go ahead and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. My name is Chance Reading. I live and own 425 and 435 Southford I Road. It's two of the five residential properties in between the proposed intersection and Highway 80. I did speak out in opposition to this when it originally was proposed. However, I do think that that the applicant's done a really good job, to be honest, working with the residents. And I think this is the best of the the designs that I've seen and am aware of. I appreciate the applicant reaching out, and we did look at this. My concern and why I'm here tonight is for my, excuse me, my family and my daughter. It's simply a safety issue. So what I, what I was trying to bring up and is, so this is my driveway. The green arrow is the south-facing direction. This is what the picture looks like as you turn left out of my driveway. Currently, this, this is an existing condition. I understand that. Currently, there's 359 daily trips. They're going to about 10x that number per their numbers, which I honestly think is a little low. I think this access is going to provide the main access for 80 for the the residents that are going to live on this side, plus there's a proposed school site there. And one of the things is the intersection that's being proposed is behind, obviously, the the visual barrier here. In meeting with the applicant, one of the things that we discussed, which hasn't been brought up this evening, which I thought might be, was, you know, a fairly simple solution, landscape removal. And there is a power pole back here, but possibly increasing this slope to increase the visibility so that we can pull out safely with the increased traffic. And that's really what I'm here to ask for. I personally believe that this is a great design. I just believe it's not finished. I believe this design should go all the way to Highway 80, and I think that's something that will probably be revisited in the future. I know that doesn't necessarily fall on the applicant. I think the city is requiring this. I know originally this was supposed to be an emergency secondary access, and it kind of grew into a full-blown secondary access, I think, per the city's requirements. I think with that kind of traffic increase, you can obviously see there's no shoulders. There's barely, this road is barely wide enough for two vehicles as it is. There's no shoulders. And the sidewalk that's being proposed is going to dump down into this, so essentially into a drainage. So it seems unfortunate, especially with the potential school site, the pedestrian access we have in the cycling community that's going to be traveling through this area. So that's my main concern here, is safety. I know we're not visiting safety. I know we're visiting grading. But I think this is an opportunity to maybe get this right because it seems like it didn't get right in the beginning. Two suggestions I do have for the project that were, I think, missed in the design is I, I think that low-level pedestrian lighting in the sidewalk would be a wonderful addition to this. I do like the dark skies, but, you know, to make this functional in the evening. And the other thing that I haven't seen anyone talk about is this is a north-sloping, west-facing hill that ends in a stop sign. This will not get sun until probably 1:30 or 2:00. I know. I know because I have to deal with this issue. And I think that there will be some ice and snow issues on this hill, and I think that wasn't addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Reading. Appreciate it. Next up is Carly Borchardt wishing to make a statement. You know what to do.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. I should have asked Chance for a reading of his comment because I don't want to reiterate everything he said, but I am going to reiterate a little bit, and this is more for my community. I have sat on the Ward Five NAB for eight years, so I was very much a part of this, this process. I also sit on the West Truckee Meadows Verde Cab. So I've been ingrained in this project since the inception. And shout out and kudos to the applicant. They have been very great to work with. They've come together with the best project that could come forward. And I think that they've been very diligent in their communications. The issue that I have is what we were just discussing with the last project, getting out of our own way. We kind of need to get in our own way here because these streets, all of this road network that we're dealing with here is Washoe County roads that City of Reno has now annexed property into and are now dumping all of this traffic into our network. So where does the city come in and take some responsibility for those safety issues? Where does that happen? It doesn't. It shouldn't land on the applicant. They have done their job, and they've done a great job. Where does the city come in and say, where's our responsibility to make sure that the existing residents that already live here and have lived here for 60, 70, 80 years are still safe on their road network? And that is where the community concerns come in. And I fully appreciate staff saying, that's not what we're here tonight. This is already a done deal. That's, that ship has sailed. But my question to you as the planning commission and the folks with the education and the knowledge and maybe hopefully the engineering can give us residents some assurances that we're still safe on our own roads. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Heather, any Zoom hands?
Nope, no Morton.
Okay, all right. And no voicemails. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to the commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, if you guys don't mind. Don't do that often. Question for you, Jeff. We'll just dive right into what, what's kind of just brought up to a recently senses fresh. From my understanding coming into this, I have concerns about what Mr. Reading was saying as well and seeing what's going on. I understand this isn't, anything that could be solved there with that turn isn't on the applicant. Am I accurate there?
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
All right, I'll take that. Ultimately, it does look like something we should be proactive about. I've taken that drive about a year or two ago with Ms. Borchardt and understand what they're dealing with. And so it does feel like a moment to be proactive. So once again, we're really not, I wanted to bring that up here now to address the public comment. I know it's not what we're voting on, but want to understand a little bit more of the mechanisms we have to address something like that where we are being proactive in this, you know, specific scenario.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I also attended the NAB meeting that, that Chance attended and brought up the safety concerns. And there were other safety concerns or other people voicing the safety concerns at that meeting and in some of the correspondence that you all received over the last few days, right? Again, it is certainly outside of, entirely outside of the decision tonight to deal with far-flung safety issues on county roads and NDOT roads and, you know, all of that stuff, right? So we can all agree that that is not the, the arena that we're in tonight. However, we do want to address the safety issue. That's very, very clear. In fact, on Monday afternoon at 1:30, a gentleman by the name of Gene, and I don't remember Gene's last name, but Gene came in and met with Frank, who's the engineer on this project and is sitting right over there, and myself at the counter and spent probably half an hour going over his concerns and his ideas associated with the, the blind curve, S-curves area that, that has been brought up tonight. So we've had a couple of interactions with folks who are dealing with and very concerned about that issue. And so we take that wholeheartedly to heart. Frank has been the engineer on this project. When I say this project, I mean the larger project, the larger Santeraculacy for a long time. He's the project engineer on this project and is definitely committed to dealing with the safety issues as they come forward to final improvement plans or final building permit plans when those come about. So he would likely be the engineer assigned to those. And so he is committed to factoring in the safety aspect. The applicant's representative did talk about a potential condition of approval to be added to the discourse tonight. And so condition number 14 that I have here effectively gives us coverage, us as the city coverage, to require the final design of the intersection and the, that whole area, that whole interplay with that S-curve and the mounds that are obstructing visibility with the overgrown vegetation allows us to kind of wrap all of that into the design of those building permit or those improvement plans as they come forward. So we have a potential condition here that would give us that leverage to do that. The applicant did also speak with UPRR about effectively trimming down the vegetation that causes those visual obstructions there on both sides of the curve. And so that would be kind of implicit in this as well is requiring the applicant to follow through with UPRR's agreement to allow them to trim that vegetation down and clear up that line of sight. So that's, that is what the city is at this point in time doing to address the safety issue within the immediate confines of this project.
Okay, thank you. And on top of that, I definitely didn't want to add anything to applicant because I know they did a great job specifically what we're dealing with tonight. So Chris, are you guys open to that potential condition?
Chris Baker here on behalf of the applicant. Our only modification would be it references NDOT in there, and I think that should actually be Washoe County because that's who controls it right away.
Okay. But you're open to it?
Yeah, again, this was the result of us meeting in the field with the applicant. It provides a solution, some, some clearing and grubbing of the property adjacent or south of his, of his driveway would, in conjunction with some of the other improvements we're doing in the area as part of the railroad improvements, I think can solve some of those concerns for sure.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, on that NDOT to Washoe County thing, is that accurate?
Yeah, so we would actually prefer to leave NDOT and then simply add Washoe County and UPRR. So not add UPRR, it's already there, but add Washoe County between NDOT and UPRR as another entity, recognizing that Washoe County may be involved. But NDOT apparently has some kind of jurisdiction in that area too. So just to be safe, it would be best to have all four of those jurisdictions listed in the approval there.
Chris, looks like you wanted to speak on that.
They do have jurisdiction in the area, but not actually, it's, it's, it's to the north. Essentially, the freeway on-ramp is the only jurisdiction they have. And then, but yeah, nothing that we would be doing improvements in. And I don't know if anybody dealt with NDOT. It's a timely process, and I'd hate for any improvements that could help with safety be held up by someone who doesn't need to review.
Just to clarify on that, if NDOT is not required to review, then they don't review. So by listing them in the condition doesn't mean that they, that they have to review it. So the city at this point, unless I have any from engineering. Okay, so engineering would like to keep NDOT in there. So that would be the recommendation. Again, if NDOT doesn't actually have jurisdiction and doesn't therefore need to review any plans, they wouldn't review the plans, and therefore there would be no associated time delays.
Okay. Chris, comment one more time. Sorry. We're ping ponging.
I feel like we're playing tennis.
Yeah, I love it.
Again, Chris Baker here on behalf of the applicant. Can we at least put in parentheses if required, just by NDOT?
That seems reasonable. Okay. Both of you will have to remind me once we get to a motion.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I'll yield the mic. And any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Villanueva, please.
This is for Mr. Foster. So Mr. Foster, this is a major site plan review, which was triggered by the need for grading resulting in cuts greater than 20 feet, fills greater than 10 feet, so on and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. Because this is in front of us, the findings that we need to make include consistency with the Reno master plan, compliance with Title 18, mitigate, traffic mitigation impacts, rational phasing plan, and then the requirements for major site plan review, right?
Correct.
All of that is, needs to be considered?
Yes, yep.
And you mentioned the only thing that we are considering is that secondary access, right? So a lot of the policy requirements, policies, values, a lot of the stuff that's in the master plan only related to that secondary access, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I have other questions, but I'm going to just stop right there for now.
Please, great, no problem. Commissioner Basara?
Sure. Mr. Foster's looking at me like he's ready. Thank you. So one of our challenges or maybe responsibilities is that new growth doesn't burden existing communities or surroundings. And I think it sounds like you all have been doing a phenomenal job at striving for that. The thing I'm sitting with right now is the feedback from the community members who are really concerned about, you know, the well-being and safety of their family and neighbors. And it sounds like provision, was it 14?
The new condition is 14, right?
Does that aim to address those concerns?
It, it does within what can be done for this project. In other words, the safety associated with the, the intersection that would be created by the new access road and the existing roadway network in that immediate area. So the safety issues in that immediate area would be addressed by condition number 14. Again, the larger safety issues are not addressed by that condition and could not be addressed by any conditions associated with this particular application that is before us tonight. However, that did give me an avenue to bring up a condition of approval from the previous tentative map, condition number 21, that requires payment of $150,000 to go towards roadway improvements addressing safety in the greater Verde, MGod area. I know $150,000 doesn't go very far, but at least it was what was conditioned of the tentative map at that point in time, payment of that amount specifically for roadway improvements is specifically associated with safety in this area.
Okay, thank you. And to build on that, there was a suggestion from the public or the community member. If the applicant would be willing to clear out some of that vegetation and so forth, and maybe this is all tied together. Do you know if they would be open to that? Or maybe that's a question for Mr. Baker, or maybe that's...
Again, Chris Baker, Manher Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, that was our suggestion to remedy the problem out in the field. And the condition that, that Jeff is adding is their, I guess, verbal response or text response to, to that offering, which does mention horizontal and vertical line of sight. You know, our, the next steps for us is to provide improvement plans for the railroad to approve. And we would include kind of that clearing and grubbing of that area south of the driveway on those plans. That would be our response to the condition.
Okay, great. And since you're up here, Mr. Foster, one last one. Since you mentioned that you did speak with the, the resident, and there was an issue, and you guys found a solution, is that what this is about?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we met, we met on site. We actually stood right where his photo was, and I agreed there, there was a solution that we could provide to help with line of sight. In addition, there were some comments on the improvement plans for the first go-round with the railroad. And one of the other slopes is actually to help with line of sight from the centerline of the roadway facing south toward the intersection is actually also going to be kind of modified to, to help improve safety in, in line of sight.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Yes, question for Mr. Foster again. I think it was your, I think it was your screen that we were using to go over some of the master plan policies that were adhered to or met. Next one, I think it was. Or maybe it is, yes, it is this one. So this is, these value or these policies that are, as we went over earlier in this meeting, are in the master plan. So can you touch on some of these, how this secondary access specifically aligns with these items? Just the secondary access specifically, because that's all we're reviewing today.
Okay. So the emergency secondary access would be pretty self-explanatory just in terms of providing a second point of access up into that area for emergency secondary access. The view sheds talk about minimizing grading and, and, you know, minimizing visual, you know, intrusion, things like that. So when we have a reduced amount of grading with this proposed secondary access, as well as a reduced amount of retaining walls, retaining wall heights.
Wouldn't that be considered like mitigation?
Yeah, in a way, in a way. It's basically saying when we look at this project as compared to the previous two projects or the tentative map secondary access, as well as the previous SUP approval secondary access, when we compare those against each other. But then when we also look at this one on its own merits, how is it, how is it lining up with the master plan? And I wish I had the, the language of each of these goals and policies committed to memory. I don't.
That's okay. So like tree preservation, we're losing 105 trees. And I know it's not you. I'm just, you're the, maybe the applicant probably has a lot of the answers too. I'm only speaking to you because I know you're, you know, this development code like the back of your hand. So I figured you probably would be a great person to answer. But if the applicant wants to come up, because I know it was mentioned earlier, we're losing 105 old-growth trees?
Well, mature trees, yeah. Which is, which is, the, the definition of a mature tree is six inches diameter at breast height. So approximately four and a half feet above the ground, a tree that's at least six inches in diameter. So, I mean, there are some larger trees. And if we go back to this exhibit, you can kind of get a sense from the underlying imagery, the size of, of some of the trees. Certainly, a number of them are smaller, but some of them are certainly bigger. So the, the applicant might be able to speak to more clearly why the increase from 30 to approximately 105. But what I can also tell you is that when we look at this visual simulation here, I had extensive conversations both internally as well as with the applicant to, to get a sense of, of why they are showing these trees remaining versus removed. And so, for example, the tree to the lower side on the, the, the right of the picture there with the design of the wall, all those trees, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, are at least 10 feet away from the wall, if I remember correctly. But the design of the wall would be such that it would, and this gets back to the whole tree preservation or goal that we talked about earlier, the design of the wall, excuse me, is such that it would allow ideally those tree, those trees to remain, their, their roots to remain, and the condition requires consultation with an arborist to also make sure that as much as possible, those trees are being preserved.
Yeah, okay. Again, I'm not trying to pick on you. I'm just, I, the position was taken earlier that a lot of the policies are, you know, in the master plan are being met. And I just don't think that's accurate because if we go through one by one for this secondary access, that's just not the case. And I'm not telling you that, it's more for the record. I'm not, again, not trying to pick on you. But can we go back to those policies one more time? Okay, so views, can we, can we get the applicant up here? Maybe that might help to go through some of these and see how those are being met. But, and again, we're just looking at that secondary access. Currently, they have approval for another access point that should this fail today, they can presumably use. Is that right?
Potentially. But again, remember that coordination with the steamboat canal or the steamboat ditch company required, that was conditioned as a part of the previous approval, was that coordination and buy-in from them. And so in effect, the applicant is being... told by the Steamboat Ditch Company that their previously approved alignment is not what the Steamboat Ditch Company would like. And so, that kind of is forcing them to move in this direction. And as the applicant indicated, they obtained that one additional parcel that allows them to respect the Steamboat Ditch Company's position in terms of what they would prefer for the alignment, as well as, so that parcel allows that to be done. But again, remember that the the overall amount of grading, the overall amount of walls and heights and all of that is reduced by the current proposal.
Yes, but again, we're only at the current proposal because the first one was rejected, presumably for good reason by Steamboat. It looks like this gentleman wants to?
Yeah.
Chris Baker here on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to jump in here. The first proposal was not rejected, it was actually approved.
Well, not by us, but I mean, Steamboat?
No, it was approved by Steamboat also.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So, it wasn't, it became a constructibility question. It's not that it couldn't be done, it's just that we didn't have, we had now an access to an additional property that was not an option to design around. So, like Jeff indicated, we do have an approved special use permit, which almost mirrors this route identically, which just provides more disturbance, significantly more walls, more grading. Not more tree removal though, I think that's where you were kind of getting at, just different tree removal. The scale and size of the trees are actually a lot larger that were to be removed because they were on the downhill slope. So, if you can kind of, I don't know if I can go through here, Jeff. Nope. Can you go back to the photo sims?
I'm sorry, what did you want to go back to?
I have control now.
And also, I don't want to hog the mic, so I'm going to, after this, I'll let you say what you're going to say, and then I'll turn it back over to the chair so others can chime in.
So, for example, in my presentation, like I had pointed out, I'm going to use this. So, before, on the downhill slope, we had two tiered rolls, so we had a wall requiring a bench and then an additional wall. So, essentially, all these large growth trees that are shielding the road were actually proposed to be removed. So, that kind of went all the way up, the route. So, now what we've done is this wall's significantly less in height, right? So, this went from 23.5 to about 13 feet. And then the grading feathered back, right? So, it allows us to do talus grading and plantings of new trees on a larger scale, right? So, we weren't doing seedlings that were not going to be irrigated, which was the condition before. So, now we're doing more mature trees that are going to be irrigated, so they would have a better success rate. And what you end up getting is you get that feathered look. And I think it's kind of important to point out here, you can't really see it, the proposed one. So, this whole area here, most of the stuff, I can go back to my presentation if you want. It's smaller scale trees, they're very similar to the size that we're replacing them with. Again, six inches at diameter at breast height, so we're talking about, you know, eight-foot tall trees, not 100-foot tall trees, which kind of the additional walls required us to remove. So, overall, I agree with Jeff, there might be more trees that are being removed, but they're not of the substantial size with the previous or currently approved route. That combined with the less walls, the better, I know there's a view shed issue in there. So, kind of what you see is you drive down Interstate 80, or when you drive down Quilice Ranch Road. Again, I think this is a significantly better solution. And I think overall, it does comply with the master plan better than the currently approved project.
Go, I have others, I'm going to let others speak.
Does anybody else want to chime in? We're enjoying your questioning. Oh, wait, Commissioner Munoz, please.
Thank you. I think it's a B for Mr. Foster. Originally, when this came through, I believe it was 2019, and I may get some of the dates a little bit off. The road in question we're talking about now was a fire access or a emergency road only, correct?
I believe the original conception was more of an emergency secondary access, yes.
And then when this came back to us the next time is when we have the, the road that we're basically, basically that they're planning over the top of now with some minor adjustments, correct?
So, okay, when, when, when we talk about the different timing here, and Chris would also have a very good understanding of this, because he's been involved since the very beginning, as I understand on this. So, the, the, the secondary access road, even under the previous, the original tentative map, was anticipated to carry residential trips, 23%, right? So, yeah, it was a full secondary access.
2019, it wasn't, it wasn't a access fire road only, it was not an emergency road, it was?
Right.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's all I have, I'll save the rest for, for conference discussion.
Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Okay, great, so now we'll talk infrastructure. So, I know that the applicant isn't responsible for creating all the infrastructure around the area, Washoe County, Reno. That's not the applicant's responsibility. However, the development that is happening, why did city, this staff believe, and I know, again, the first project, the first accessway was approved, but we're not talking about the first access, we're talking about this accessway. And so, we're under new review, we're looking at the conditions again, or excuse me, we're looking at the review, the findings again. With the infrastructure, can you, can we touch on that? Why, why we, why the staff and the applicant believes that current infrastructure is appropriate for the secondary access point, especially since it's not just a secondary fire access with a gate?
So, again, unfortunately, that is not within the scope of what I am charged with in reviewing for this.
But the findings do indicate that safety is a factor. It is, you said it earlier when I asked you, that the major site plan review?
The findings are in relation to the project that we are analyzing, which is simply the secondary access. It is not the entire project. The entire project, the planning commission, and then the city council deliberated on the entire project and the associated impacts four years ago.
I'm not talking about the project, I'm talking about the secondary access.
Correct.
Specifically, why is the secondary access point, and I, and I, I'm trying not to be rude to you, or but, but I feel like you're turning my questions into something that they're not.
I am not, I assure you.
Hold this moment, Mr. Really, we'd like to chime in.
Commissioner Villanueva, if I can clarify. When Jeff says, we focus on this, this is a request for grading within the open space designation, as well as the cuts and fills.
Correct.
So, we, staff is charged at reviewing that in context, are the grades appropriate? Does fire review this? Does it meet their standards? Are the, the grading, is grading properly mitigated? To be consistent with the master plan in terms of visual impacts, we look, does it meet our standards? Like Jeff said, we're not contemplating this with the safety of the overall project. We're looking at it in context of, is the grading appropriate that we're reviewing with this request?
Okay, so is the grading appropriate with the infrastructure that's currently in place now?
Yes.
Okay, and why is that? Can you touch on that for me, please? Given that it is right next to high, you know, it's right next to the highway, and it does, you know, we are, I mean, there's potential for slope impact, as far as, what's the terminology that we use when, slope failure? Especially when we're removing so many trees, there's a risk of slope failure. We're removing 105 trees, slope failure. So, in this case, the infrastructure that's currently in place, I understand there's going to be some walls put up. But can you just speak to why staff believed it was appropriate for the secondary access with respect to the infrastructure that's in place, given the grading and the risk of slope failure? Please touch on that.
Absolutely. So, the design of this roadway, the secondary access roadway that is shown on this diagram here, is being, it's being done by qualified engineers. They have to comply with our requirements in terms of the city's Public Works Design Manual and all engineering practices that are, it's just, it will be part of the overall final design of the roadway. The, you can see my reference in the third bullet to the conditions requiring the additional geotechnical analysis that is associated with the walls and the overall project. So, some of these kinds of things get addressed during final design, much the way on a tentative map versus a final map. Some of the things get put to bed during final design, so the tentative map shows approximately where the parcels will be, and the final map, you know, figures out some of the final details. So, some of that will be done during the subsequent building permit process. The additional geotechnical analysis, as I mentioned, with the conditions, compliance with code with regard to RMC, and compliance with standard grading and cuts and fills requirements in the code. The additional conditions seven through nine here, addressing enhanced grading techniques, dealing with things that are both visual as well as structural, so that we can make sure that the ultimate design of this project and the execution of this project is such that there will be the various issues that are associated with grading for a road and development of the road and the retained, associated retaining walls will be done in a way that respects the area visually, as well as achieve success structurally and design-wise. So, that would be how that happens.
Okay, and so when reviewing, when we're looking at our findings for this major site plan review, which is with, with respect to the grading resulting in grades cutter than 20, greater than 20 feet, so on and so forth, what's an example of something you would consider with regard to, with regard to that? You know, say we're considering consistency with the Reno master plan. So, we did talk about some of the policies, but actually, let's go to compliance with Title 18. So, compliance with Title 18, what's an example of, in this case, what you would look at if, you know, when reviewing as a staff for the city, what would you consider when reviewing for this particular major site plan review?
So, again, grading, the Title 18, which is the Reno municipal code, has very detailed language on grading and cuts and fills and slopes and all of those things. And so, all of those requirements would be addressed through the standard process. This is not unusual, this is exactly how this happens all the time. Approvals are based on an assumption that those kinds of things are going to be addressed during final design and the building permit process. So, that's how the grading would be addressed, and that's how those things would be, the compliance with Title 18 as you're indicating. It would be addressed throughout the rest of the process moving forward.
Okay, so why is it in front of us today, if it's going to be addressed moving forward?
Because it's an entitlement that is required for cuts and fills for the grading.
Commissioner Villanueva, if I, if I could add to that. So, when staff reviews the grading plans that are submitted, we look for compliance with Title 18 requirements in terms of the slopes that they're providing, mitigation measures for erosion, that sort of thing that are covered in conditions on this permit. As Jeff mentioned, I believe it's conditions seven through nine, actually go on, enhance what's even required in our standard code procedures. So, those get conditioned on this report, with this request. And then when they come in with their final improvement plans, staff will verify that those conditions are being met, and that all those measures are being implemented with the final design.
It's clearly part of policy and procedure for it to be brought in front of us for a reason beyond just that of, because it's an entitlement. That's obviously not the case, and so.
No, and I agree, the reason that they're here tonight is due to the cuts, the cut and fill aspect of the grading that's being proposed. But we have standards that they still have to comply with. It's just from a grading perspective, that's kind of, I guess, above your normal grading, so to speak. That's why there's thresholds established in the code that provide this greater review.
So, and if I can jump in, and I appreciate, now I'm seeing where I think you were going, Commissioner Villanueva. So, the, the reason things come to this body for an entitlement is when they are above the, you know, outside the pale, right? Above and beyond a traditional project, whether it's for residential adjacency, or cuts and fills, or, you know, heights, or anything like that, right? When they're above what we can approve administratively, directly at a building permit level, without ever coming to a decision-making body, right? So, in this case, not only are, not only does the applicant have to comply with RMC Title 18, but when it comes, when it comes to a body like this, you have the ability to add conditions, i.e. conditions seven to nine in this case, that, that are above and beyond, as I think, Mike, you were just referring to, that are, so that when the applicant comes forward with building permits, those additional conditions, they have to comply with above and beyond RMC and Title 18. So, whereas they wouldn't have that opportunity, but they wouldn't be required to do those before having had to come to this body.
Okay, I mean, I'll let, I'll let others go, but I, if I have more questions, I will let you know.
Okay.
I don't feel like everything was answered, but I'll move forward and we'll go from here.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Basar, please.
Yes, thank you. I have one question, but I do want to touch on my fellow commissioners' questioning. I just wanted to say, I understand where she's coming from, I believe. I think when we walk out of this room, we just want to unequivocally know why we're saying yes or no to something. And when we have folks that drive in all the way from Verde, and they catch us out in the hallway, and they ask, why did you support that, or why did you deny that, because my safety and so forth? We want to be able to give them a clear answer, right? And we want to give them, not, not in a kind of rude way or anything, but really, an answer that you would be able to explain to a five-year-old, right? Like, simple, straight answer. So, with that, that kind of tees me up with my question. We were trying to talk about safety, and the common theme is, well, not today. And I understand, I understand why. But the question is, when? Just so folks that are here, all the way from Verde, can plan and anticipate when they can actually share their input and work with these fine folks on, on a viable solution, when can they tentatively plan for safety discussions? So, there's a solid solution that works for everyone?
So.
And Mr. Baker can come up too, if you want to tag team it. It's up to you.
So, within the context again of what we're looking at tonight, staff feels that safety is being addressed in a, in a, in a finite place, right? Essentially, at the intersection there. Beyond that, as I mentioned, condition number 21 from the previous LDC for the tentative map requires the $150,000 payment for safety improvements in the roadway network in that area, okay? Beyond those things, it's, it's, it's essentially, I mean, it is outside of my charge for what we can look at for this decision tonight. I would hope that there are opportunities for discussions. I know that Carly, who spoke earlier, is actively engaged in discussions with the county and other folks, trying to impress upon them the realities of the safety issues in that greater area. Again, not specifically right here, but in the greater Verde area. So, there are folks that are having those discussions, trying to get change to be brought about. I commend them, and I hope that they are successful. I've seen the roads out there, I've driven with Carly last week on Thursday, right? To look at, at the roads out there, absolutely. They are substandard for the widths and the, and whatever, shoulders and things like that with regard to traffic that's coming. I can't give you anything else for tonight. There's, there, I, there's no, there's nothing that this particular project can, can get involved with there. So, I wish I had something else for you, Commissioner Basar.
I appreciate that, Mr. Foster. Here's the thing, it's our discretion, so we're going to roll with things. So, Mr. Baker, do you mind stepping on up for a sec? And I would like, would you like to step up for a second? Yeah. Carly, Carly. We're going to do this. It's going to, it's going to take 30 seconds.
Commissioner Basar, before that, I just want to make one clarification on what Jeff said. When we say that we look at only the grading, well, we also look at the safety aspects of that grading. So, we look at the road grades, we look at the geometry of the alignment of the road itself, and we look at the intersection where that's tying in, which is why we have proposed condition number 14. So, to say that we don't look at safety at all, no, we look at safety in context with this request. There were conditions on the previous maps and other components of the projects that will get implemented with the project itself. But what we're looking at tonight is the safety associated with this specific request.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate that, and I'm totally fine with that. But since we're all about adding conditions and working together and finding solutions, I just. just want to know from Mr. Baker, since you're, you're representing the fine folks, is a commitment to, to work with Carly and folks and the families to ensure that there will be a, a final solution that works for everyone, especially because there's kids involved and all that. Just for the record.
Chris Baker, here on behalf of the applicant. Again, I, I think we've, we've done that today. We've done that throughout the process. But again, the ultimate decision unfortunately isn't up to us. It, it's up to you guys in the city of Reno and Washoe County, whose actual road we're talking about. We just get to propose ideas. We don't get to determine whether or not those ideas get approved.
No, I, I know. It's not about approval. It's about how we work together. And that's going to be the theme of my tenure here, ensuring that we work together closely and intentionally. And so I just want to, is, is that satisfactory to you? Or would you like to see something more?
I would love to be involved with this. As Jeff mentioned, I have been working with RTC. I've been working with the Washoe County. I've worked with anybody and everybody that will discuss this with me. I don't know personally, because this is not my forte, this is not my expertise, that there is a solution on Crystal Park Road. I believe that the powers that be can come to the table and offer some suggestions and some corrections. But again, our road network was not planned. It just evolved. It just became. So these roads are not even two-lane roads. They're not striped. We have no gutters. We have no sidewalks. We have barely a curb. It, it is not safe. It is not safe for the pedestrians. It's not safe for the residents. It is just simply not safe. And I encourage any one of you to come out and drive this with me. I'm not making this up. This is not NIMBY. This is not, I'm worried about a development in my backyard. This is truly a safety concern for our community. And I'm happy and willing to work with anybody involved. I don't know, again, I don't feel that it's fair for me to put this on this developer, but their development is generating the traffic that's going to be using these roads. So at what point can we say we need to address this? And who is responsible for that? And I feel that the city of Reno is. That is what I wanted to put on the record tonight.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And Mr. Baker, thank you for taking the heat as well. Nothing personal there, just.
Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you for doubling down and making sure that we do our job too.
Okay. All right. Let's rein it back in. Let's get to what's in front of us. I think we've had a lot of the questions. I'd say we move into discussion. Does anybody have any points they would like to make? Commissioner Amunoz.
Thank you. I'm looking at Title 18, 1804, 401. Encourage initiative, grading practices are appropriate heathens from public view and unsightly scarring. I voted against this road last time it came up. And I feel that the, the use of the area and the use of the entire project wasn't something that I would have ever approved. I think it was a beautiful area that I personally used for hunting 20 years ago. But we get to the point where we are now. And regardless of how I feel personally about it or the area, I do feel that the, the developers and, and the city are doing their very best to make this area work that is going to function how it should. And I can see the developers gone through great lengths to make sure that everything within their scope of what they can do, they have done their best to maximize the green open spaces, safety in the roadways, the, the grading, changing the grading from what it was last time in the walls and heights from what they were last time to now. It is a great improvement from what I saw. And regardless of how I feel about the project, regardless of how this affects the wildlife in the area, because it absolutely does. And, and, and that was a major sticking point for me last time was the, the mule deer population travels directly where they're removing all these trees down across the freeway, which they have done a great job mitigating that. They've, they've put in the, the stops and the, the, I'm not sure what they're called. They're like retaining walls for, for animals to be able to jump down and not jump back up onto the freeway. They, they've done that. It's, it's visible in the area. So regardless of my personal feelings are towards this, I do feel like they are putting an effort. I look forward to when the city and the county catches up on the roadways and the areas to make it safe for travel out there because it is unsafe right now. And, and I know that's not in the scope of what we're doing, but because of what they've done, because of the changes they've made, I, I can look at this and say, yeah, I, I do see they meet, they meet the findings and that I can approve this now. And I wasn't able to two years ago. So I do appreciate the work they're putting in.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Armstrong, were you going to make a note?
I was gonna make a motion, but if there's still comments, I will hold off.
Commissioner Rohmeyer, did you want to point of discussion?
Yeah, quick comments. I really feel that what we're seeing today versus what was presented in the past is a marked improvement. The reduction in the walls, the limited cuts and fills from an engineering standpoint are a substantially better secondary access. I think condition 14 within the nexus of the project shows good faith in working with the neighbors. And yeah, I can make the findings.
Okay. Thank you. I'm in the same place. I think specific to this item, we've seen from our public commenters that they're simpatico with the applicant on this very item. And the concerns outside of that, I'm sure will continue to be voiced and hopefully will be more proactive. But what we have right in front of us, we have an applicant who's been very active with the neighbors in this specific item. And I think they've done a great job. And I'm happy to see this improvement too. So I'll also be in support.
Commissioner Villanueva, so I disagree. I mean, I don't disagree to the point that they've made an effort to communicate with the community. But just because they've communicated with the neighbors in the community does not mean that they've met all the requirements of, and all the, have met all the findings here that I'm required to review. For example, like I mentioned earlier, I do think safety, and we are entitled to, you know, review this for health and safety, welfare, well-being of the community. I, I don't believe that, you know, this, this is a, a place where a road should be, the secondary access should be. I think the slope is way too steep. I'm the only one here that actually visited the site, so I could tell you that because I was there just a couple days ago. But that's, that site is steep. We're losing a lot of the trees. The policies that, in the master plan that are alleged to be met here or, or, you know, plans here that are not met, that are mitigated in an effort to meet those policies, I just don't believe are, meet the threshold that is required for this area. And I understand, this is just the secondary access. This is not the, the, the review of the development that's been approved. But I was a no the last time on October 20th, 2021 for similar reasons. And, I mean, they're back here again, not because they were denied access, but because this is allegedly a better access, which I, I don't know if that's the entire truth. But I have to take them for their word because, you know, they're here today. But in any case, I, I disagree. I don't think that this is appropriate place. I don't think it's safe. I don't think this secondary access is safe. And I don't think it meets the policies of the master plan. So I, I'm going to be a no vote on this.
Okay. Thank you. And for the record, I, I have visited. I, I took the tour with Ms. Borchardt and went to the Verdi Community Council and listened to the concerns of the neighbors the last time this was in front of us. So I've definitely been there and visited. And I hear what you're saying, but notably, I have been there. Commissioner Vasara.
Yes. Short and sweet. I'm for it. As much as the last 10 minutes of my line of questioning might indicate, it, I'm actually for it. I think my rub is really on us, on our end, right? Mr. Foster, you do a good job presenting, guiding the facts. Mr. Baker, appreciate your efforts doing community outreach and the, the folks from the community being here. I just wish that we had better answers for y'all, for some of these things, you know? And, and that's maybe something that we'll, we'll need to work on. And I hope we will be in the near future. So we're working more in parallel instead of serially, where it's like one after the other, and it takes a long time to figure out what exactly is going to happen. So great job, y'all, tonight. I'm for it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Christian Armstrong, I think you're ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I was and still am. I, I'd just like to say, I do think it's, I, I think the alternative access road that's been proposed is appropriate. I do think there are appropriate mitigations that we went through specifically for the trees. I, I agree with the trade-offs and I ultimately think it's, it's going to be a better solution. So with that, in case of LDC 24-00011, Santera Quilichi Secondary Access, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend that the Planning Commission approve the major site plan review subject to the conditions listed in the staff report with the addition of condition 14 amended to reflect NDOT as applicable and the inclusion of Washoe County.
Sound good?
Commissioner Rohmeyer, a second?
We have a motion and Commissioner, you second? So we have a motion and a second. Heather, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Villanueva? No. Carrie Rohmeyer?
Yes.
Arthur Amunoz?
Yes.
Manny Vasara?
Yes.
Harris Armstrong?
Yes.
J.D. Draculich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
All right. Thank you. And good luck. Appreciate your time tonight. All right. We're going to close item 6.3 and move to item 6.4, case number LDC 240005, Elks Lodge RV Park. And I'm working on the assumption we'll have an applicant, a presentation from the applicant. Come on up. You have 15 minutes.
Thank you, commissioners. Is this up?
I believe you're good.
Okay. And my clicker, the mouse for this?
Mouse.
Mouse. You can use the clicker to like go through the slides and then the mouse to point if you would like to.
Okay. That's easier. Thank you. My name is Anne Marie Lane from Dow. I'm representing Elks Lodge on this request. Also with me today, I have Senior Civil Engineer Silas Callahan on the project. I'd also like to introduce, and if you could just stand briefly and wave to the commission when I introduce you, I've got representatives from the Reno Elks Lodge. We have their exalted leader, Ms. Connie Weber, and Elks Lodge Board Member, Mr. Dan Langshaw, as well as Mr. Sid Russell, Assistant Wagon Master of the Reno Elks RV Club. Thank you, folks, for hanging in there with me today. The purpose of my presentation is to, to introduce you to the Reno Elks project and answer any questions that you or members of the public may have, and then respectfully request Planning Commission approval of the conditional use permit. Finally, I'd like you to introduce you to the applicant's organization. The Fraternal Order of Elks Lodge was founded to promote and practice the four cardinal virtues of charity, justice, brotherly love, and fidelity, to promote the welfare and enhance the happiness of its members, to quicken the spirit of American patriotism, and to cultivate good fellowship. As a fraternal organization with a network of nearly 2,000 lodges and communities all over the country, they administer a generous charitable foundation that spends more than $80 million annually for education and patriotic community-minded programs. The Reno Elks Lodge has been operating out of the current lodge since 1961. The Reno chapter of Elks was established on June 30th, 1900. The project site is located west of the Reno Convention Center. The proposed project revitalized an undeveloped vacant dirt lot adjacent to the west of the lodge. Oh, there you go. If the conditional use permit is approved, the vacant lot will be converted to overflow parking and 11, and 11 short-term RV rental spaces for Elks Lodge members. The request has been made for a conditional use permit to establish a short-term recreational vehicle park as a permitted accessory use to the Reno Elks Lodge, primary use as a fraternal organization. RV parks do require a conditional use permit in the city of Reno regardless of intensity, including size or lengths of stays. So why the project? The two main driving factors for this project are to increase the interconnectivity between lodges and to accommodate parking for recent membership growth. Besides being a place where neighbors come together, families share meals, the Fraternal Order of Elks Lodge offers an extensive network of communities across the nation. Approximately 393 lodges across the country offer short-term RV rental spaces to their members. Of the 16 Elks Lodges in Nevada, seven maintain RV spaces as an added amenity to their members. RV rental spaces are used by members when traveling to and from official Elks-sponsored events as, as alternative accommodations while visiting family and friends, and as emergency locations for those who need to evacuate due to natural disasters. As far as growth, in addition to the 11 RV rental spaces, this project will include installation of 68 new parking spaces to accommodate for the recent growth in membership. The Reno Elks Lodge has added 831 new members since 2019, which is a growth rate of 57%. The subject site is located within the mixed-use urban zoning district. It is surrounded by that zoning district of the north, southeast, and west. The uses surrounding the site include offices to the north, a private middle school to the south, and a tire store to the east. It is adjacent to an apartment complex to the west. Although notification was sent to surrounding property owners and the site was posted as required by code, staff has confirmed that they have received no written comment and opposition about the project. The project was scheduled to be presented at the Ward Two Neighborhood Advisory Meeting. Although the meeting was canceled, NAB board members were emailed project information and no comments have been received. As stated, the applicant is proposing 68 new parking stalls, including 11 short-term RV rental spaces, which includes four new ADA parking stalls and one new ADA short-term RV space. The need for the additional parking is justified with the Elks Lodge membership growth rate and growth rate projections. Elks Lodge members utilize the RVs, Elks Lodge members utilizing the RV spaces will have access to Elks Lodge restroom and bathroom facilities as well as the proposed sanitary dumping station for the discharge of vehicle retention tanks. The proposed RV parking spaces meet the minimum setback of five feet to parcel boundary lines. An existing six-foot height fence with solid vinyl slats separates the existing private school to the south from the proposed adjacent use. There's an existing six-foot height iron fence, which is located on the west property boundary line between the Willowbrook Apartments and the proposed parking area. Adequate landscaping with differing heights of plantings will provide adequate screening between the Willowbrook Apartments located west of the proposed parking lot addition. As far as operations, onsite trash disposal will utilize the existing Elks Lodge trash receptacles. And I would like to point out that this request does differ from traditional RV parks in that the stays are limited to one to two weeks, and the use will be limited to Elks Lodge members only. The park will be required to have a operation manual. This operation manual will include choir hours. Although the slide states 9:00 PM, proposed choir hours will be from 8:00 PM to 9:00 AM based on staff's recommendation. In addition to the choir hours, the manual includes restrictions on generator use and noise levels, a maintenance and upkeep schedule of the dump station and trash locations, and it will also prohibit the use of wood burning fires. Although the project is designed to accommodate individual electric and water hookups, that is not a requirement in code, and this project will be phased. The final determination on electric and water hookups will be determined based on final design cost projections in the future. The sanitary sewer dump station is required by code, is required by code and will be installed as designed. Staff recommended conditions of approval include limitations on construction hours, enhanced landscape along the western boundary, including additional trees and shrubs that exceed current city standards, and on, and an onsite signposting that has a detailed map of the park, identifies park facilities, and includes the established rules of the park. The applicant agrees to these and all recommended conditions of approval. As evidence throughout the application narrative and associated documents, the applicant's COP request is consistent with long-range policies and regulations governing the allowance of these requests. As such, the applicant respectfully requests the of these requests. As such, the applicant respectfully requests the City of Planning, City of Reno's Planning Commission approval of the conditional use permit. At this time, I'd like to thank City of Reno's staff, especially Mr. Oswald, for his assistance throughout the application process. I'd also like to extend my gratitude for the Planning Commission's time, as well as to the Elks Board Members for trusting Dow to provide the professional services on this new exciting project. Should the Commission have any follow-up questions about this request, I or project engineer, Mr. Callaway, are happy to provide a response. Ms. Weber is also available if you have specific questions for the lodge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll get a presentation from Brooke.
Good evening, once again, Planning Commission, Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner. Just go over the project site. We are in Ward Two, as you can see, almost at that junction of Ward One, Ward Three, and Ward Two. Go over the project site. The project site itself is approximately two acres of an overall five point two acre site, and as we come in a little bit closer, go a little bit more. This is to establish an RV park in a, that mixed-use urban zoning. That does require a conditional use permit. The big things that we looked at this is that compatibility with those surrounding uses and the operations. Just to give you a larger outlook of this, as you can see, off to the western side, we have a larger park, and we really start to see residential coming in further to the west there. Up to the top, that's the Atlantis Hotel, just so you have a perspective of where we are. This is the new Moana Pool coming in shortly, and then down here, this is Kitsky and the intersection of three, or sorry, North Virginia and 395. North Virginia is really important because it is that main arterial hub that we have. We have our Bus Rapid Transit that runs down there. That runs every ten minutes. So, and this larger area as a whole is known as one of our regional areas. Coming in closer to the site, off to the east of the site, there is the large convention center, and then directly next to the site are some tires, some retail, and Dutch Brothers This project here is the Fire Creek Casino. This was an approval that came before this Commission a while back. Still, the approval is still there, but have not moved forward with construction. Off to the north of the project, we have two quasi-office buildings directly to the north. Specifically, what staff looked at were two of the main uses we have. We have a multifamily development and a small middle school, a small private school to the west and south project. Going over our Real, Reimagined Reno, we have several things that are supportive of this. It's that underutilized spaces. We've shown it is a vacant lot that has been there. We have that central core and infill of that. This is a really unique use of an RV park, and not something we usually see in a denser place. But I think as I'm trying to show, that surrounding area is really supportive to that recreational use, both for our community but visitors, with the convention center, additional casinos in the area, the bus rapid transit, the proximity to food and other shopping in that area. And then on our right, showing our, our zoning, which is our mixed-use urban zoning. So within our code, we have several additional standards that are required for RV park, and the applicant has met or is exceeding those. To look at our overall project site, our project to the left there is that two acres with the larger main Elks Lodge in the white. They do have a swimming pool, recreational facilities, the bathrooms, and other sanitation will be open to the guests twenty-four hours a day. With that, we do, we did look at that screening and buffering. We are requiring additional trees, and code does require that that fence that is currently open view be screened in one way, will be screened. That will be reviewed through the building process. Sanitation is probably one of the most key importance of this, and this is really coming from the state down. So the state has several requirements that they have to go through first to be approved. We have held back our, our final moving forward with any permits until they have those in place. Additionally, we have the parking that they have come in. They do meet or exceed their, their parking standards, so what they've done. Additionally, we had, what is unique about this area is they provided an alternative paving surface. So it is a GeoGrid that is backfilled with gravel. This is great in many ways from sustainability of, of the percolation of that water. The alternative surface also reduces heat island effect and is suitable for this. Staff, engineering has reviewed this and staff, and we are in agreement that this, this is the appropriate surface. So the big one we looked at was that operations. First thing we have, we have a dedicated management to this. The Elks Clubs, they are, as was stated, they're very well established. They do this across the nation. They have that background in support of how they would do it. They have really limited themselves in many ways. The, the city does allow ninety days at an RV park, and they have really limited those stays to, to two weeks. Additionally, the operation manual has other things related to quiet times, no open fires, generators, and a number of other things that will, will come in to support that proximity to those other uses. Our access point, we have our main access point coming in here that hits the main paved parking area. What we anticipate the RV parking will mainly be used here. As you can see, the darker gray area will be the paved area with the pervious surface on the remaining portion of the site. Come in really quick to this area, just to go over the project. Looking here at that access point I identified before, it comes up, and we do have one way, and, and we worked with them to get this specific. So that is when you're dealing with larger vehicles, that, that, how they're moving through there and that safety, especially because of pedestrians and that cross traffic, that one way is really important. All those sites are designed to be backed into, so, so those future movements back, it will be coming out, which promotes that safety and pedestrian safety. This is that general parking area. Down in the middle of that, between the two areas, you see a white line. That is a designated pedestrian area so that we have safe pedestrian access through the site. And finally, we're looking at a recreation area, although they do meet our recreation standards with that pool and the other amenities that provide, they are, will be providing additional recreational amenities, which will have landscape and will meet city standards and requirements. And then finally, that additional buffering and screening that we'll see with landscape along that residential edge. With that, staff could make all the findings for a conditional use permit, and I'll leave you with a recommended, a recommend, recommended, rec, a recommendation. Thank you all.
Thanks, Brooke. Appreciate it. All right, we'll go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site. Oh, and I've read, I read emails as well.
Commissioner, same disclosures.
Commissioner Armstrong, familiar with the site, I read and received emails.
Commissioner Becerra, familiar with the site, received emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, been to the site, read and received emails.
Commissioner Draculich, read and received emails, familiar with the site, and also got a presentation from the applicant prior to this meeting. All right. Do we have any request to speak forums, Heather?
I do not have any requests to speak forums for this item. We did receive correspondence and voicemails that were for this item. They were forwarded to the Planning Commission and have been entered into the record. Would you like to hear the voicemail right now?
Please, thank you.
Yeah, this is Alan Crowley. Live here in Reno, Nevada. I'm a member of the Reno Elks Lodge, and we have the RV area proposal is coming due tonight, and I am totally for it. Something that should have been done a long time ago, and it's more of a Elks recreational area. So I am for the approval and support of this project. I appreciate that, and I thank you so much. Bye.
All right, that's it for voicemails.
Thank you very much. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to the Commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff. Commissioner Becerra.
Yeah, I don't have questions really. Just tip-top. Great job. I'm ready to make a motion if no one else is.
I'll comment. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, I think this is a good use of that area. I actually have done, they, I know that Elks Lodge does host quite a few different events there. I've been to, I volunteered for a Veterans Legal Services event there, and they did a great job as host at that location, and I think this is another great use for folks to be able to use that site. Thank you.
Great. Go ahead and make your motion if you'd like, Commissioner Becerra.
Sure. Thank you. In the matter of case number LDC two four dash zero 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 five, Elks Lodge RV Park, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit, subject to conditions listed in the staff report.
I have a motion.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Good luck with the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, we will now move on to case number LDC two four zero 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 one four, Reno Seek Temple. Looks like we will get a presentation from the applicant. Please come on up. You'll have fifteen minutes. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Eric LaRue. I'm with Robinson Engineering, and our client is the Reno Seek Temple. Our client is in the process of building a new temple facility to replace the previous facility that was destroyed by arson in around 2010. Our first exhibit is a vicinity map, which shows you where this location is in Ward Five. Our client has used this site for religious assemblies since approximately 2009. Construction on the new temple facility had begun pursuant to a building permit. Under the original permit, the foundations stubbed utilities to the exterior of the building at their original planned locations, and some site improvements were completed. You can see that work when you drive by today on East Second Street. We are proceeding with the project, and there's a lot going on, but we are before you tonight for just one reason, and that is we are requesting an alternative equivalent compliance to decrease the ground floor interest requirement for transparent windows and doors from twenty-five percent to plus or minus fifteen point one percent in favor of enhanced pedestrian amenities. Making these improvements to the pedestrian environment and activating the public area in front of the building will be a suitable substitute for transparency. Arguably, these improvements will provide greater benefits than the additional windows and doors. We have provided a site plan and landscaping plan as the second and third exhibits. They show the details, and I'll let you, Heather, just roll that forward. That's the site plan there, and then the landscaping is the next document. The added amenities are a detached wandering sidewalk along East Second Street, a front courtyard with benches, and plenty of trees. This approach will enhance the overall design and look of the project. It will positively impact adjacent property. It will provide benefits to the public passing by on foot and using various modes of transportation. This approach is consistent with the features of adjacent properties and use regulations in the area, and will increase public safety, health, and welfare. We have requested such a reduction out of a respect for the privacy of our clients, community members who will be using the facility. We want to acknowledge Carter Williams for his creativity and cooperation in coming up with this approach, after we consulted with him about this project. We also want to note that the landscaping plan was well received by the Ward Five NAB when we presented this at their meeting on October one. No one opposed our request at that time. I just want to note one thing, one error in one of the exhibits, the site plan, the northeast corner duplex will not be demolished. Just want to make sure you are not confused about that very small detail. I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you as well. Looks like we will get a presentation from Carter.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carter Williams, Assistant Planner, for the record. So tonight before us is a request for an alternative equivalent compliance submitted by the Reno Seek Temple. The property is located on the southwest corner of East Second Street and Locust Street, and it's specific to ground floor interest, but how it's, how that comes out in code is the transparency of windows and doors. The property is located within the mixed-use urban zone, which allows for religious assembly by rite, and it's located within the urban mixed-use master plan land use designation. It is generally supported by the master plan and is consistent with the following, the policies listed on the screen. Here is a view of the existing condition of the site. Some features that will be improved through this process. Currently, there's multiple old curb cuts. There's five in total across both Second Street and Locust Street. It will be reduced to two. There are, is an existing bus stop and street light infrastructure that's obstructing the existing sidewalk, and there is no landscaped parkway. It's, it's abutting the street from, oops. So the second street in this area is considered an arterial, and with the smaller sidewalk, the obstructions that exist today, and generally, it's just, this poses a danger to pedestrians. Sorry. So this request considers ground floor interest of a building, or to put it differently, whether there are features that draw pedestrians to the building. So the code quantifies this based on the amount of windows on a facade, windows and doors that provide views into lobby, retail, restaurant spaces. So this process, the alternative equivalent compliance, allows us to consider alternative features that would serve the same purpose. So the applicant's proposal has the existing sidewalk reconstructed, pulling it away from the street, allowing for that, that parkway to, to be installed, which improves the landscaping situation on the site. The building is also pushed closer to the, to the street, which , which kind of creates that bridge between the public sidewalk and the civic space that's provided on the public, private property. The space will be activated using, with pedestrian amenities, including benches, paper patio, and planters. Those curb cuts are going to be removed to not, not disturb the pedestrian environment, and the sidewalk is oriented so that it's positioned outside of that, that infrastructure that's currently obstructing it. The building also provides ground floor interest by having the entrance project out and having a walkway effectively or connection to the, to the sidewalk directly from the entrance to clearly define it as such. And that's further demonstrated by the, the architecture. The scalloped or multi-foil arches clearly identify the entrance, which is encouraged within our code. There is, on the Locust Street side, it's not a pedestrian entrance, so to add similar interest, there's evergreen tree plantings that are proposed on that, that, that side. So generally, the design features that are proposed are, they achieve pedestrian activation through kind of a multi-layered approach, marrying building design, site design, and landscape design to achieve those goals in the mixed-use districts. The, here are the findings for an alternative equivalent compliance. Through staff's review and analysis, we've, we're able to meet all the findings. And then on the screen is the recommended motion. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. All right, we will go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Rohrmeier, please.
I've been by the site.
I visited the site. Commissioner Becerra.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site and read and received emails. I don't think there were any emails on this specifically, though.
Commissioner, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, no disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, no disclosures. All right, any request to speak forums, Heather?
I have no correspondence, no voicemails, and no request to speak forums for this item.
And no ZIM. And no Zoom.
No one on Zoom.
All right, cool. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open up to the commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff. Commissioner Rormeyer, kick it off.
I have a question for Carter. And this is just my, so I can understand the process. Would the applicant have been able to do a minor deviation for the under 10% reduction in transparency?
So the transparency requirement is further, it's more than 10%. So it's, so 25% reduction would be 2.5%, and they're about 10% under.
Got it. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Hi, Carter. So my understanding of policy reason behind the clear windows or the transparent windows is for welcoming, to create that welcoming retail space or space for patrons, and in this case, we are just creating an alternate equivalent, right, by allowing for other accommodations and features that kind of mimic what that would otherwise do. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Discussion, my fellow commissioners?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do, kind sir.
Stand by on the wrong one. Well, my fellow commissioner brings up his motion. Just want to say it's nice to see Mr. LaRude in a different context other than the Reno Tahoe Odyssey.
Actually, can I share something as well? For, I do want to say, I think this is, I didn't get a comment, but I think this is appropriate because not all the alternative equivalents that we see come in front of us actually do what they're intended to do. Sometimes gives the appearance of that, but doesn't really satisfy that. So I think in this case, that is being met, and so I'm happy to support the project, or the modification.
Good.
And I can make.
Got it, I got it. Case number LDC 24-00014, Reno Seek. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the alternative equivalent compliance subject to conditions listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Basera, a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Good luck. Thank you. All right, closing item 6.5, moving to item seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Who's my guy?
I can do it if you don't mind. Okay, so our last meeting was Thursday, October 26, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Business of the day included three resolutions of appreciation for the service of Sarah Chavilicek, Peter Gower, and Mark Johnson, the last two I think we're very familiar with. And then we had three public hearings on regional plan conformance review. The first was for a City of Sparks Master Plan Amendment for El Rancho Estates. The second was another City of Sparks Master Plan Amendment for the Marina Gateway and Prater Way Project. And the last one was a City of Reno Master Plan Amendment for Diaz Masonry, which we saw come through this commission, all of which were approved. There were no reports, and the next meeting is November 20, 2023, which is a Monday. Usually, they meet on Thursdays, but because of Thanksgiving, they'll be meeting on Monday this time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Closing item seven, moving to item eight, staff announcements. Mike, here we go.
Yeah, just a couple of quick announcements. The Valley View Estates PUD project, which this board approved, the last, beginning of last month, that went to city council. Council continued that item and requests for some additional analysis be included in the PUD, so that will come back before them in the future. They did not set a date, but I'll give you an update once that does come back. The Viewpoint Apartments, which this board also approved, the applicant appealed a condition related to the secondary access to council, and actually withdrew that appeal the day of the hearing. They worked out their issue with the fire department, so that will proceed as approved by the Planning Commission. Lastly, just a couple venue changes that we have coming up. The city will be doing some IT upgrades to the council chambers in December and January. So our December 20 meeting and our January 3 meeting will be held at the City of Sparks City Council Chambers, and our January 18 meeting will be held at the Washoe County Commission Chambers. So that will obviously get you some additional details on that, but just a quick heads up that we'll have some venue changes coming up in December, January.
Remind us again, and thank you. And then just to confirm, our next meeting is November 16. It's a Thursday, so is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, closing item eight. Item nine, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Go ahead, Mr.?
Yeah, I don't know if I have one necessarily for the future, but I did want to ask, there was a lovely report given by Angela Fuess today at the workshop related to how we work and all this stuff, and I was just wondering maybe from Mike or someone else on staff if we can get a copy or if that can be presented to us, or it was really neat.
Absolutely. We can, staff can forward you a copy of Angela's presentation. Well, I'll make sure that gets sent out in the morning.
Maybe send that also with Commissioner Armstrong's request from the master plan presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, closing item nine. Item 10, public comment. Heather, anything on your end?
No correspondence, no voicemails, and no request to speak forums for this item.
Anybody in the chambers wish to speak? Seeing no humans here, we will close. Item number 10, public comment. Move to item 11, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody, have a good night.